Maybe network or later.
I didn't see, okay, thank you.
Alright, we're live, we're live.
We are going to take them to go stick at their face. They should know still he was.
Also keep it up. As you want them to do for you. Who have both from there. I believe in you. Oh, good to know that. Okay, thank you. I'll go. Oh, good to know that. Okay, thank you. I'll go. Also keep it up. Oh, good to know that. I'll go. Okay, thank you. I'll go. Also keep it up. Oh, good to know that. I'll go. Okay, thank you. I'll go. Also keep it up. I know. I know. I know. I'm a man. I'm a man. Boy, I know. I know. If you want to know. It's in my mind. I'm a man. I'm a man. But I do want to know. As you want them to do for you. Who have both from there. I believe in you. Oh, good to know that. I'll go. Okay, thank you. I'll go. Oh, good to know that. I'll go. Okay, thank you. I'll go. Also keep it up. I know. I know. I know. I'm a man. I'm a man. Boy, I know. I know. If you want to know. It's in my mind. I'm a man. I'm a man. But I do want to know. As you want them to do for you. Who have both from there. I believe in you. Oh, good to know that. I'll go. Okay, thank you. I'll go. But I can't. Oh, good to know that. I'm a man. Oh, good to know that. I'll go. Okay, thank you. I'll go. Also keep it up. I know. I know. I know. I'm a man. I'm a man. Boy, I know. I know. If you want to know. It's in my mind. I'm a man. I'm a man. But I do want to know. As you want them to do for you. Who have both from there. I believe in you. Oh, good to know that. I'll go. Okay, thank you. I'll go.
We are going to fight our freedom from exile. And we are going to get this freedom from exile. You know when we started this whole thing? We told the people that we will bring Biafra from diaspora. Some people did not know what we saw. You didn't know what we have seen there. When we were telling you that Biafra, we are going to bring it from diaspora. You don't know if it's happening today. We are going to fight Nigerian from afar. We are defeating them. We are defeating them. We will fight them. We will defeat them. Biafrans in Europe. I am very, very happy this evening to be in your midst. I'm very, very happy that the message of the liberation of Biafra is spreading across Europe and of course, across the world. In Europe, from Austria to Belgium, from Belgium to Denmark, from Denmark to Finland, to France, to Germany, Greece, Ireland, Italy, Iceland, Israel, Malta, Netherlands, Norway, Portugal, Russia, Sweden, Spain, Turkey and the United Kingdom and of course, many more on the way. We are spreading like wildfire. My fellow Biafrans, it is no longer a news that the Biafra that we have all craved for for many years is happening not just in our lifetime, but you are part and parcel of the liberation of Biafra and you are part of the history. You are not going to be told the story. You are not going to be hearing the story from somewhere. It's just that you are part and parcel of this history I'm making today. And so if you find yourself in this particular midst of these history makers, you must be very, very proud to be proud and proud for yourself. Because when every other person were very skeptical, always suspicious of Simon Epa, always fighting fault on other people except themselves, you stood up, pick up the courage and trusted me. And this is where we are today. So you, you don't know what you have done to yourself, but in the next 10 years, you will know that the decision you've made in 2021 or 22, whenever you join or 23, was the actually the right decision that is shaping the history and the future of Biafra. When we started, Mazenamdekan was kidnapped and the struggle rendition to Nigeria from Kenya. I told Biafrans that Nigeria has made the worst mistake in the history of Nigeria. And then, nobody knew what was actually coming. We started to pick the broken particles, one after the other. We picked the particles, they broke after the kidnapping from Kenya. We were bringing them together to form what you see today happening. How many of you have watched most of the Sky, Skyfire movies? Where the, like the movie of Swaznega also, where the iron machine will be melting and where you shoot at the machine, the police machine, the policeman, the man will scatter, the gun will scatter the man and then you need to come together, you know, after melting and then come back to life. That was actually what had happened in the Biafra struggle. When Mazenamdekan was kidnapped, the Nigerian government was bragging and they were making press release, press conference, how Biafra has been crushed. I was watching and observing. And of course, because the people that we are dealing with, both in Nigeria and those that were in Africa Nigeria, many of them were demons. I mean, demons is really demons. They started to go and do consultations to find out who Simon Epa is. And each time they make consultation, they always tell them, ah, that guy is real. He's real, you need to stop him, you will need to stop him. And that was how the attack against me started. And the only reason was to stop somebody who is actually genuine. Because they were never, they were never genuine. So, I promise Biafrans that we are going to bring our freedom from diaspora. Many people still did not understand. Even many of you today who are here did not understand what I meant by that. That we will bring our freedom from diaspora. Because if you do not know where the rain start to beat you, or how did they say it, you will never, you know, know how rain is going to stop or where it's going to end. So what we did was to first of all, study the situation of Nigeria, study how we can deal with these monsters and demons in the name of entity called Nigeria. And after solving the mathematics, we got the answer. We also know how to solve the mathematics, it's very, very easy. We went to work, begin to gather all these particles together, which is some of you that are here today, you form major part of the particles. So Nigeria thought that the way it was designed, that they have made everybody poor, that nobody can ever rise again to challenge the entity terrorist state called Nigeria. And the least expected place was Biafra. The least expected region that could ever rise in or rise up to fight Nigeria is Biafra. Nobody believed today, then, that Biafra will pick up arms to defend themselves. They never believed. In fact, nobody ever believed that the situation, Nigeria thought they have actually conquered everything that, you know, when you talk as a Biafran, they tell you about your business. They tell you about your properties. They tell you how are you going to eat? So Nigerian government has actually destroyed the future of an average Biafran. Not only an average Biafran, they have destroyed the future of those who even believe in Nigeria. What did we do? We noticed that that is the only weapon they have against us. And we went to work. We start reshaping of our people. They say brainwash. How will you not be happy if somebody brainwash you to be strong? How will you not be happy when somebody brainwash you to stand against your person? Ah, everybody will be very happy with that kind of brainwashing. But you know, the elite, those enablers are never happy with the way that every Biafran has actually waking up. There's some people who during the COVID-19, they, they, they gathered all the palliative and lock it up. Another region was enjoying palliative from the government, but none, none, not even one bag of rice were shared to the Biafran people. In fact, the minister of, the minister, a woman that was in charge of the palliative then, even openly, openly in public, said that the Biafran people will never receive any palliative. It is on record and the videos are there, that there are people are living abroad. And so they receive money from their relatives, but not everybody, not everybody in Biafranland have relative abroad. But that was the conclusion of a Nigeria state over a people that have refused to let go. So you know, after all this, everybody will relax. Nigeria succeeded in making sure that something happened today. It's just one week, everybody will forget about it. And they wanted to do it to Mazenamdekan. After they kidnapped him, they wanted to make sure that, you know, nobody talked about him. So after I studied this thing, I said, what we are going to do is to make sure that the kidnapping of Mazenamdekan will make sure that those who kidnapped him will never, ever leave to tell the story. We started by making sure that those who were bragging about the kidnapping of Mazenamdekan and how the Biafra movement have ended will be put to shame. We said that the kidnapping is going to be very expensive. We started from there. Today, it is very, very expensive. Today, the kidnapping of Mazenamdekan has become the most expensive commodity, the most expensive movement, the most expensive project that Nigeria has ever embarked on. It has cost everything that Nigeria never expected. I didn't go to end there. I also promised Nigeria that the kidnapping of Mazenamdekan will facilitate the Biafra to emerge as a nation. They thought it was a joke. So we use that kidnapping to become what we are today. That is the reason why Biafra is flying all over the world. And let me also tell you. I am aware that they have actually concluded to grant Mazenamdekan a bail this month. We welcome that. Well, mark my word. We welcome that. I just want to put it on notice to every Biafran. We have two goal. One is to release Mazenamdekan by the activities of the Biafran government. Two is the Biafra freedom and the Biafra independence. That is the main goal. It was the reason Mazenamdekan was kidnapped. And so, after they have released him this month, we will go to the next, to the next stage. But I'm not going to talk yet until this bail is granted. I am also aware that I have even planned that the people that are going to come as a shorty after the bail has been granted this month will all be not on us. I know that maybe, ah, after this month, they're going to change it. But I don't want to talk much, you know, so that not to, you know, influence anything. But we are very, very much aware of what has been agreed on and we are going to be waiting very patiently for that. So Biafran must be on standby. Once he is released, our, one of our objectives has been achieved. And then we go to the next one. And I believe you know what it means. So my fellow Biafran, today we have decided that the delegitimization of the Nigeria terrorist state within Biafranland will be taken to the next level. And that's why today we are locking down the Nigerian institutions in Biafranland. Because it is, this is to show the generate money, the generate fund to fund terrorism against our people. So we are fighting the source of the income of Nigeria. Not only that, if we are non-independent state, we are going to place sanctions on Nigeria. We impose economic sanction. And because we are not yet at an independent state, we have to now figure out how to navigate this particular complex situation. Now we have navigated it, we have figured out how to impose the sanctions on Nigeria within Biafranland. And that sanction is the lockdown of every Nigerian institution for 30 days. Today is the 50th day. After this 30 days and maybe they still did not release Mazenamdekan on this particular September hearing, we will extend the lockdown of the Nigerian institution for 60 days. After 60 days, we will extend it to 90 days. I am telling you the fact. And this is going to continue until we will make sure that no office of Nigeria will be very, very opening in Biafranland. They will stay and they will be scared of staying in Biafran territory. That's our target. Because you can never allow a terrorist state to breed. No, we do not want to let them breed even one minute. Because one minute of breeding will bring arms to kill our people. So we will never allow them to breed in Biafranland. So after these 30 days, we will give them maybe one week break and we'll come again for two months. And let me tell you, we are still, we still have a long way to go. 25 days is still remaining from the 30 days. 25, it tell those who think they have violated this particular order by the Biafran government will have themselves to blame. I am telling you the fact. So we will make sure that the delegitimization of Nigeria will continue to enter new dimension at every stage and every point in time. This stage one is this 30 days. And this will continue until we go to November, when our convention will start on the 29th of November in Finland. And of course, by then, you don't, you don't need to know, I don't need to tell you what will be happening in Nigeria. Because you know now they have seen the green light and they are running up and down, consulting with European Union, consulting with whatever they are consulting with and all that. They even agreed and have paid one country heavily to hack, to hack it to my account. And the country actually collected the money to hack my phone, to hack my ex account, to hack my, to hack my email. And I tell them that I am in Finland, a nation of innovation and technology. If you can hack my phone and hack my email and hack my ex account, then I know that Nigeria have actually done very well. That will never happen. So, but I'm aware that that is the plan and I have paid money this week, this last week. And we're waiting for them. So my fellow Biafrans, we are going. I just want to encourage all of you, stay very strong, do not panic. We have beaten Nigeria hands down. Nigeria can never rise again. And just like the pronouncement has been given, Nigeria is nosediving and have nosedive. Nigeria is a collapsed country, is a failed state. It has met every requirement as a failed state. I don't understand whether many of us actually know what first state is all about. There are, you know, there are requirements that, you know, category where you categorize, uh, you know, a state and the state will become a failed state. Nigeria has met all these requirements as a failed state. They are now unable to solve their political and economic problem and crisis. And Biafran government is providing a solution to that. I am very, very happy that many of you that are here today are not just participant in what we are doing. That many of you are deep rooted and have come to see and hear firsthand information about what the Biafran government is doing and what we are intending to do and how we are doing it. So you can also tell others. You know, I'm happy that the United Kingdom, for example, had a workshop the other day where they were teaching about the IOU, where they were teaching about the ID card and all that. That means that you are not just a follower, a follower, follower. You are also, you know, into the government and knows what is going on. And that's exactly the way you should be. Those who are not yet conversant with what we are doing, you teach them. You tell them, you explain to them. When they have the question, you explain and answer their questions. So it is a government of the people, by the people and for the people. We will protect every Biafran anywhere in the world, irrespective of whether you have tied my name as a baby and was dragging it in the street of Italy and other part of Europe. It doesn't matter because I know those things doesn't touch me. You know, you are just being ignorant of who is Simon Epa, you know, and they were misbehaving. So many people who were doing incantation with my name and all that, we even gave them followers in their platforms when they, when they, when they blocked all their, all their, all their platform. We created and asked people to go and follow them. Biafran went and followed them. So if, if they have succeeded in silent Simon Epa today, where would they be? What is going to be there? They would, they would just realize now, ah, we did not know, we would have just allowed that guy. But the point is that, you know, I came to this struggle prepared. I came to this struggle, when I mean prepared, I came prepared. It's in my see, hi, it's in my day. And it's just that many people don't know. If you think you can bring Simon Epa down, you waste your time. You just disgrace yourself and Simon Epa will continue to stand very strong. When I joined this struggle, I did not join to romance Nigeria. I did not join this struggle to start looking at faces. I joined this struggle with Yewe Anonoma. I am telling you the fact and I've said this several times. Many people don't understand what is Yewe Anonoma. One only one is the highest degree of anger.
I know.
... Alright, we are getting ready to start. We're getting ready to start. Um, Honorable Dominique, please get ready, get ready with your team. We are starting very soon. Thank you.
You fight with passion very strong. To you our love will always belong. Ghana joins in singing praise. Your name in cheers we all raise. You fight with passion very strong. To you our love will always belong. Ghana joins in singing praise. Your name in cheers we all raise. In brightest day or darkest night, Simon you are guiding light. Together we'll find our way with your spirit here to stay. Your first heart it beats with pride. Simon Epa by our side. No matter what it takes we'll strive. With you our future comes alive. Simon Epa by our side. Raise our flags, I touch the sky. Yeah for loving every beat. With your spirit, we can't be beat. You fight with passion very strong. To you our love will always belong. Ghana joins in singing praise. Your name in cheers we all raise. You fight with passion very strong. To you our love will always belong. Ghana joins in singing praise. Your name in cheers we all raise. In brightest day or darkest night, Simon you are guiding light. Together we'll find our way with your spirit here to stay. Your first heart it beats with pride. Simon Epa by our side. No matter what it takes we'll strive. With you our future comes alive. Simon Epa the good kind. Raise our flags, I touch the sky. Yeah for loving every beat. With your spirit, we can't be beat. You fight with passion very strong. To you our love will always belong. Ghana joins in singing praise. Your name in cheers we all raise. You fight with passion very strong. To you our love will always belong. Ghana joins in singing praise. Your name in cheers we all raise. You fight with passion very strong. To you our love will always belong. Ghana joins in singing praise. Your name in cheers we all raise. In brightest day or darkest night, Simon you are guiding light. Together we'll find our way with your spirit here to stay. Your first heart it beats with pride. Simon Epa by our side. No matter what it takes we'll strive. With you our future comes alive. Your first heart it beats with pride. Simon Epa by our side. No matter what it takes we'll strive. With you our future comes alive.
This meeting is being recorded.
A minute silence to the fallen heroes of Biafran. The time starts now.
The time starts now. We mourn our heroes past, we celebrate them. We continue to honor them, both dead and the living, who are sacrificing their lives for Biafra land to be totally liberated from the oppressors. Ishe, ishe, ishe? Be the event in place. Thank you so much. Welcome everyone. And I hand over the program to the US North and South American rep, Honorable Emilie Gué. Over to you now, you go to item number three. Continue for number three. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister of Information. And now, we will have the opening prayer by Mazi Ukogbe Onuke. Mazi Ukogbe Onuke.
Is he here? Please if he's here, let him raise his hand so we can give him the mic.
Honorable Sunny, he's here. Just spotlight please.
Oh, sorry.
Spotlight me office.
Okay.
Yes, one second. Yeah, just spotlight. Me or you?
Yeah, we have a spotlight now. Your TV transmission is, it'll come up.
Mazi, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Chukokabiya. We have a song which has, which sing. We have a wonderful treasure. The gift of Simon is a treasure. We travel together to Biafra land. We have a wonderful treasure. The gift of Simon is a treasure. We shall travel together to Biafra land. Everybody! We have a wonderful treasure. The gift of Simon is a treasure. We shall travel together to Biafra land. Thank you, Chukokabiya.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Chukokabiya. Thank you, Chukokabiya. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Ishe, 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 is dog. Thank you.
Hopefully you translate this one on. Thank you. And this is we will introduce our state admins. Before we do that, I want to greet all Biafrans. Welcome to this town hall meeting. I also greet all the honoreables in the house. I throw a special salute to APM. And I also remember Prime Minister. Wish him well. We also remember Mazi Nndikano. We all should keep him in prayer. So, at this point, I'd like to have all the admins in the house raise, if you know how to operate this system, raise your hand. Or so that you can be spotlighted. All the admins in the house. Now, California admin will be joining us later. And I would, can you? Okay, let's go ahead and, those of them that have raised their hand, go ahead and introduce yourself, please. Admins in the house?
Yes, my name is Chukumeze Eche, Tegasanmi, Ndewo.
Ndewo.
My name is Love, New York admin. Thank you.
Ndewo. Okay, we want to make this as snappy as possible. Okay, so far, are there any other admins in the house?
Yeah, Kilo.
Yeah, we have Kilo, we have a Chinny. Chinny, you have not said something.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Biafrans. My name is Chinny Apu. I am the deputy North South Continental rep. You are all welcome to this program, Ndewo.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Kilo, Arizona admin. I welcome everybody, APM, the media team, and of course, our angels, our wonderful angels. Thank you very much.
California, Michael. Please, if you need your camera, you can start your camera now. If you need your camera, you can start your camera now. If you need your camera, start your camera, if you need your camera.
Good morning. Good morning from here. My name is Michael. I'm the Californian admin. Thank you.
Thank you. Chima, Chima, your hand is up, over to you.
Yeah, good morning, good morning, everyone. My name is Mazi Chima. I'm here representing Jersey. I'm also the Trade Minister.
Thank you. Amaka's iPhone, unmute yourself. Amaka's iPhone. Amaka's iPhone. Amaka's iPhone. Amaka, unmute yourself. Amaka, unmute yourself. Amaka, unmute yourself.
It appears that she's having issues, but for the sake of time, let us just all right. Effers, these are the new and and the older members of the admins present. And I'm also Emilie Gué, Emilie Gué. I am relatively new to this, to the post that I, you know, as a rep for the PGI USA, South and North.
You don't have to press anything, unmute here.
I did, right? I'm trying to listen.
All right. So, wait a minute, I think that Nonye, Nonye just checked in, is that right? Have you introduced yourself, Madam Nonye?
No, sir, I haven't. That's what I'm about to do now.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Biafrans, all the honorable ministers. I greet all of you. My name is Nonye Chima. I am the Maryland admin. Thank you.
Okay, now, we will, for item number five, we will now turn over to the, to APM to introduce his cabinet ministers and give us a special introduction to Shaun Akujobi, our new Biafra America liaison. Go over to you, APM. Thank you, sir.
Greetings, honorable members here, and greeting fellow Biafrans. I think because of time. Honorable Sunny Agorawa. Am I coming out?
Yes, I can hear you, APM.
Okay, just give me one second, please.
All right. Okay. Honorable rep, that item will be taken by the COS of the PM. COS of PM, are you here, Honorable Amobi?
Yes, I am.
Okay. About to take that item, that item says, that item says, that is item number five. Introduction and acknowledgement of BRI cabinet members, ministers, Biafra liaison officials, and all new officials. Over to you, sir.
Okay. Greetings, Biafrans. Greetings, my APM, Obato Bia. Greetings, Sunny Ndu. Greetings, all the cabinet members who are here and the reps and admins and all Biafrans and friends of Biafrans here, greetings from here. It's been a long time we had a town hall meeting where Biafrans came out on their own, knowing fully well that Obato Bia is not here. But here we are having a cabinet meeting when Obato Bia is not here. The reason is because we have an acting prime minister elected by law. The reason we are having a cabinet, a town hall meeting is because we, Biafrans, we have adopted a pattern different from everything anybody in the world has done. Starting from the events before the creation of the government. Biafrans stayed on consistency with whatever we started doing. That is why we are here today. From sit at home. Sit at home that had requests. Lebeldat request for everybody. And we are all seated here. So, I thank everybody who is here today. It is an honor to be in the same line with people who have a clear thought of vision for what they want for the Biafran people. At this point, any Biafran who is not seated here to understand what is going on in Biafra land or what is going on with the restoration of our independence is a weed. Out of the char and the wheat, we are separating everything. It has been done from beginning, from time immemorial, the separation already started. But God has using his own hands now to remove every other char from this few wheat that is here. Yesterday, one of our brothers said it's not about the number. Because we have a promise from God already that restoration, this Biafra is going to be restored. So each and every one of us that are here today know that you are a very, very special person. You are going to be among those special numbers that are going to bring freedom for Biafra. Thank you all for being here. This is the first time I'm talking to Biafrans at least officially as the COS to our APM. So I had to thank everybody that has brought us this far. It is not easy. We did our sit at home, we made sure over 20 million votes were taken away from the Nigerian terrorists. We have done everything by law. So what we're doing here is a great thing, gathering here today to continue in the path that has brought us to where we are. And when we continue, we're going to get to where we're going. So I have the privilege of introducing the ministers in the house today. And I'll go right into it. So I have the privilege of introducing the ministers in the house today, and uh I'll go right into it. Uh, I don't know, Sonny, can you spotlight the ministers, please?
Uh, not all of them are on camera.
Okay, but it's okay, I can call, I can call as I can see on my screen.
Yeah, just acknowledge all of them because there are many and the screen would not take call of them, so please uh be happy on your item because we are running out of time. Thank you so much.
Okay, I see, I see my, I see my CD, uh my dear sister, uh Dazion. Dr. Brasson. Thank you very much for all you do for Biafrans. I see um our sister, uh Dr. Joy Roby. You know, uh Obi, everybody here. Dr. Sam. My dear brother Okow, all the ministers of the media. High five Vision. Pastor Bam Bam Bam. Uh, it is, it is good that uh the name you took is what you have represented for Biafra in this whole situation. In Ghana, do everybody, they are doing a banana, bam bam bam. Uh, my dear beautiful sister with the smile, uh our European representative Bridge. I greet you in them. Uh, you, you have been a solid pillar. You have been an example. This is the kind of women that we want as example for Biafrans. Professor Choma, Adaza, these are the Biafrans, the, the, the people we want as our role models and women. So we have to look at this people. Uh, you see our dear sister, you see the face, it's, it's clear. When you look on your screen, you see we have a a new face that is going to build and break our bridges between the Americans here, the, our people back home and our people here. Uh, Shankwala Akujobi. I've had the privilege of knowing this woman, almost, almost all, all the time I've been in the United States, so you know, she's, we have got a solid woman by our side. You're welcome to our cabinet. I think this is the first um, the first town hall meeting you've been in. So you're welcome. You're gonna see how your family do what we do. Uh, you're very much welcome. Every cabinet member here, uh Adabetti, uh you know, you have used your wisdom in all that you have learned in, you know, from time to educate us more when you come on the space. We appreciate you, we appreciate all the good work you guys are doing. I don't know if I've called my dear brother, Dr. Sam. Greetings, Dr. Sam from here, and all the cabinet members who are here, who I can't see on my screen. I greet you, our dear, uh, our own bishop, the original bishop of Biafran people. Uh, we greet you from here, all the admins, James. Uh, everybody here, I greet all of you here. You're welcome to this uh town hall meeting. Let's cross our fingers, a lot of good things will be heard, things that will help people to sleep tonight, so you know, it is time to, it is time to make sure that everything is set in place and the discussions of Biafra is what we have all come here to do. So we're going to do what we have to do, support whatever, whichever way we have to support in doing what we're doing. Darling, everybody, thank you all for being here. You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Amobi. Thank you.
Thank you, my senior.
Thank you, my COS. COS that understands what COS means.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, uh wait to, because um it's like, next time I will be charging people that takes your time more than usual. And then we will start from our COS of uh of our prime minister, our APM. Honorable COS, uh you, you will pay fine next time for taking our time more than uh usual. Thank you so much for your warm introduction of the cabinet table. Okay, over to you, Honorable Miligay.
Yes, I just wanted, thank you very much. Just wanted to remind you of uh 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 Madame uh Shankwala Akujobi, uh to give her a couple of, you know, minutes to uh to just make herself known to Biafrans.
Yeah, I'm looking for her. She has co-hosts.
You had her before, she was, I saw her before.
Shaun, you can raise your hand, please.
Okay, one.
There she is. Yeah, yeah, please just uh share with us, share with Biafran.
Well, I just wanna say hello to everybody. Thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Shankwala Akachobi, and I'm from East Texas, a small city called Gilmar. And um I moved to Dallas uh back in twenty seventeen when I married a Biafran. And at the time, I was studying psychology. Graduated and then attended uh University of Phoenix for my bachelor's um in business project management. From there, I went to challenge myself, so I um got into the IT world and got into information technology. Um, got my Caesar certificate, and then I worked for a couple of uh banks and lenders uh as an IT auditor. Um, now I am managing my family business, and we just opened up a insurance agency, so I'm kind of busy, I'm all over the place. Um, how I got into Biafran, well, how I got introduced to Biafran was my husband. Um years ago, he used to always mention to me that he felt like Nigeria was not, he wasn't part of Nigeria. You know, and he had shown me like some histor- historical clips online of Biafran, and he had shown me like things that's happening in Nigeria. But I just disregarded it, um I kind of changed the subject, you know, because maybe I just wasn't understanding what he was talking about. Um, he then stopped talking to me about it, um but it didn't stop him. He's, he kept watching his program. And there was this one particular program that he watched from sunup to sundown, when he woke up and he was brushing his teeth, going to work, coming back home, he just watched this program over and over and over. And I asked him one day, I'm like, um, you know, what are, what are you watching? And he told me Mazie Nandikano. And I was like, okay. And then the situation happened with him, and then Simon Akba came in picture. Okay. Um, he then came to me, and he was like, um, I just heard about this convention in Finland that I want to go to. And I'm like, he was like, okay, we should go to it. I'm like, great. So we went to Finland, I got there, and I was amazed. I seen so many people that I didn't realize how important Biafran was. Um, so sitting through the convention, um it really just really opened my eyes up to the importance behind Biafran. And two things that stuck out to me the most was, um first, it was the veteran survivor stories. You know, just hearing their stories, um, um, hearing that they went through this and they survived, and you know, I got a chance to hear that, you know, they really touched me. And then two was the mother and children's, what they had to go through, you know, the fathers and sons having to go fight the war. And as a mother of three, I can just imagine um what they went through, you know. As a wife and a mother, you expect your husband to come back home. And some women didn't get to experience that, so that really made me sad. So after the convention, I became super obsessed. I started um watching videos, uh clips, documentaries, even the ones back in nineteen sixty, black and white uh films, I was watching them because I really wanted to know the truth, uh Biafran and what really happened. Um, so in conclusion, um I really want to appreciate everyone inviting me and, and, and bringing me to the team as American bilateral and regional uh affair representative. Um, my goal here with Biafran is to spread the awareness, you know. If I didn't know about the history, I can imagine how many other people didn't know about the history as well. So I really just want to spread the word, uh the restoration of Biafran. And I want to seek justice for the ones uh who lost their lives shorts. So, is it?
Thank you, thank you, Shankwala. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Shaun. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and everyone should remember that my fine over, over by use time, you pay fine. Thank you, Shankwala. So, Honorable Miligay, over to you again.
All right, um, we will continue with uh the next uh, which is the presentation of uh Kola Nut. And the breaking of the Kola Nut by Maryland Bridgie. So Maryland.
Honorable Nonye, over to you. Is not APM that will be breaking Kola Nut, so it's Maryland. So, Honorable Nonye, over to you.
Okay. Come on now.
While we wait for the breaking of Kola Nut to be prepared, um take no no BC three. Take no BC three. Take no BC three. Why is your hand up? Take no BC three, unmute yourself. Why is your hand up?
What do you mean, sir?
Yeah.
I, I want to appreciate everyone.
Yeah, hold on, hold on, it's not your time for uh
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, just stay on the line. When it's time for matters arising, then you will have time for questions and answers, and also to give your gratitude. Um, APM, is there a way, the, the camera could be closer to the uh Kola Nut? Because this, your big chair has taken uh the coverage from where the Kola is actually is. Okay, we bend, bend it down some more, so that uh it go capture, okay.
Biafran people, I greet you again. And on behalf of Maryland, I present this Kola to our South and North American rep. And on his behalf, we are giving this Kola out to be shared among our people. The Kola is for peace, unity, progress, and success. So Maryland is taking, breaking the Kola with a total amount of four hundred and fifty dollars, four hundred and fifty eje ma today. And we have taken our Kola. Thank you.
Thank you, Maryland.
Thank you, Maryland.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maryland. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this point, um I will address Biafrans.
Yeah, uh call the names of um
Okay, hello, Biafrans. Uh, so I'm going to call the names of Maryland members that um donated for the Kola Nut. Uh Mazie Madmuka fifty eje ma for Kola Nut. Mazie Mark Onuka fifty eje ma for Kola Nut. Mazie James Onuka fifty eje ma for Kola Nut. Honorable Nonye Chima fifty eje ma for Kola Nut. Mazie Emmanuel Akibondo fifty eje ma for Kola Nut. Mazie Benlook fifty eje ma for Kola Nut. Mazie Kedikudovisa fifty eje ma for Kola Nut. Mazie Igogji Onuka fifty eje ma for Kola Nut. Muada Genadiv Nsude fifty eje ma for Kola Nut. So that made it up to four hundred and fifty eje ma for Kola Nut. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um at this point, we would like to have the states to come pick up uh the Kola Nut, and as they do so um can they also give us the num, you know, the uh their own donation for the Kola Nut? This, can this, the states can come along, come along and pick up the uh their Kola Nut. Before we go to individuals.
Oh, goes first.
Yeah, uh, let me represent, I'm gonna represent Virginia at this point. Virginia will pick up the Kola Nut with one hundred eje ma.
Thank you, thank you, Virginia State.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have um Honorable Law for New York. Over to you.
There we go, Nandebiafran.
There we go.
There we go. Greetings to everybody, starting from our Supreme Leader Mazanamdekanu, down to the last person in Biafran, whom and abroad. For the sake of time, because we need to, we have a lot to do, we are not gonna sleep here. I'm gonna do two things together. On behalf of New York, I will use fifty eje ma to pick up the Kola. And um I will call the donation for this town hall meeting at the same time. So fifty dollar for Kola, one fifty for the town hall from love. Five hundred eje ma from the Okama family. Hundred eje ma from Eto. That's a total of eight hundred eje ma from New York. There we go.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you so much, Honorable Law.
Thank you.
No place to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, New York. Thank you, Biafra Liaison, New York. We have an iPhone, iPhone, your hand is up. Which state is that iPhone? Where are you representing? iPhone, unmute yourself and go ahead. iPhone, unmute yourself. iPhone, unmute yourself.
Honorable, can I make a little comment here?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, if there is anyone who needs to uh uh excuse him or uh him or herself because of work or anything like that, uh they can, they can go first.
Yeah, we need them to come up. If they know they are Russian, how to work, they should come up and then take the floor. iPhone, over to you. The person with the name iPhone, you can speak, please. You have the mic. iPhone, we can't hear you. All right, while you continue to try your device, we come to Californian Michael.
Yeah. Good morning, all Biafrans. Uh, I'm calling from California. This is Michael, the uh state admin. So we Californians, um right now, we are not many, so uh, but we agreed that we will support um for today's program, um with two hundred eje ma. So we are pledging two hundred eje ma for today. Some of my members contributed already, but uh not everybody. Um I'm still hoping that they will contribute by the end of the week, uh we will send the receipt. And um I will come back later to make some few announcements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything for?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything for Kola? California?
Uh, for myself, I'm pledging thirty eje ma for Kola, but some others pledged a few uh amounts, I'm just gonna mention it, I'm just gonna uh bring them all that together and mention it later. Thank you.
So, uh is, does that thirty make it all two hundred? Uh is it, is it thirty separate from the two hundred? California?
Yeah, thirty separate from the two hundred is what we Californians agree for today, but not everybody made the payment yet. Thirty does for my personal uh pledge, I'm gonna redeem it by by the end of the week.
Okay.
Yes, honorable measure, over to you.
All right, so uh greetings everyone, all protocols observed. Um I'm just gonna go straight to um the color nut and donations for A P M visit. So Texas, uh for color nut, we have uh hundred and seventy a gemma. And for A P M visit, um we have, um I'm just gonna call the names. Um Ezia da Helen and Nudjulu two hundred a gemma. And Nukwala Chinera Munakeh hundred a gemma. Honorable Chinera Apple fifty a gemma and twenty color nut. Um myself hundred a gemma and fifty color nut. One other Abigail Akuta fifty a gemma. Sister Lydia hundred a gemma. Igwe Beafra hundred a gemma and ten color nut. And Ezia da Uzo Chuku twenty color nut. Ezia Dastella Umbamba hundred a gemma and fifty color nut. So. For A P M visit, we have eight hundred. Gemma and for color nut, we have hundred and seventy. So altogether, Texas, we have nine hundred and seventy a gemma.
Thank you, Texas. Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Texas. We have honorable Kelo, over to you, your name is Ob. Honorable Kelo, over to you. Honorable Kelo, over to you.
Thank you, Minister Apara, honorable. And thank you to everybody. Um A P M, you're you are wonderful than the. Of course, our angels. I'm from Arizona, I I have to be, uh I'm going, I'm actually at work right now, so. Um but I'll be listening in. So from Arizona, we have a total of uh uh one thousand. That's fifty a gemma for color and for the. For for the white office. So the total of one thousand a gem. Thank you very much.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arizona.
Can you repeat? Uh can you, can you please repeat the number for the visit?
Um nine fifty, nine hundred and fifty, so in a total of one thousand.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right.
So Ohio here.
Ohio was Amaka.
That would be Amaka, yes.
She was having issues turning on her device. Amaka, are you there? You can try again, Amaka. Amaka, try to unmute yourself.
How much time are you gonna give him?
Amaka, try to unmute yourself. Amaka, unmute yourself.
Well, shall we continue and um?
Yes, we continue. Over to you, sir.
All right, um. I I'll go back to Maryland, um. Since we uh tried to uh. Speed up things.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh my god. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You, go ahead.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you.
I think I omit, I have omitted myself.
We can hear you, we can hear you loud and clear.
Amaka, go ahead, speak up. We can hear you, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. Hello.
Hi.
Okay.
We are hearing you very well.
All right, greeting.
You're welcome.
Greetings, everyone. Um, oh my god, what's going on?
We are hearing you.
Concentrate and speak on the Zoom, don't worry about the TV.
Okay, 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 yeah. Um. Thank you for bringing me in. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, my A P M. Awesome man, these people, they don't know what they're missing. Our A P M is so handsome. And all the cabinets, I'm looking at your faces. I'm glad I'm your, I'm your miss. I always like, I used to say, I don't have much to say than to say letters strong, uh stand strong. And keep moving. We are getting there. Um. There is a song that says um. I love Beafra. It's weird. Um milk and honey is. When we get there, we will enjoy it. It's a matter of time. And I want to use this opportunity once again to call my fellow people at Ohio. I'm just asking you guys, what are you waiting for? There's no time to waste. Come on, let's do the need for. How many times they will, they uh we continue be deceived even when everything is open. But I like what is happening. It made me to, it is teaching me a lot of lessons. I don't know if some people, if you guys are are learning from what is going on, it made me to know people to follow. Um before now, I subscribe to a lot of people in YouTube. Everybody say Beafra, I will subscribe. This one we say, um. Uh over to Ogie, I will subscribe. This one we say, Udoakamiri, I will subscribe. This one we say, uh this this, I'm sorry, I'm taking a lot of time. But after this, I started, the way I subscribe, I started on subscribe.
Can I interject here for a second? For the sake of time, let us just, uh you know what we are doing right now, right? We uh. We uh picking up the color nut and also making our donations for the visit. So. Uh. Yeah, go ahead and uh and round up quickly and let us know if you have, what you have for the color nut pickup.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, um I'll pick a color nut with fifty dollars. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah. Thank you. And because I'm, I'm not gonna come back, that's why I I'm saying what I say. I'm not gonna come back. So I picked the color nut with uh fifty dollars and I'm submitting what we are doing today with hundred dollars. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
There was.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Akon.
Thank you. Bye. I I rest my uh mic.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Akon.
God bless you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, uh Maryland, you wanna complete uh your contribution for the visit? You gave us the, you could, you gave us the, the number for the color nut. Are you there, Maryland? Yeah, you you gave us the number, you gave us the number for the uh for the color nut. So uh. The vi- yeah, for for P M A P M's visit.
Yes, I have it. And so um so the names of donors for P M V C. Uh. One is Marzey Mark Omo ka. One hundred a gemma. Marzey John Omo ka. Fifty a gemma. Marzey James Omo ka fifty a gemma. Wada Mary Jones. Fifty a gemma. Wada Moni Chairman. One hundred and fifty a gemma. Marzey Emmanuel Akubondo. One hundred a gemma. Marzey Ben Luke. Fifty a gemma. Marzey Emmanuel Chibu, Chibu Ke, fifty a gemma. Marzey Ikachu Kudolisa. Fifty a gemma. Marzey Ugoji Omo ke one hundred a gemma. And Wada Genevieve Nsudet, one hundred a gemma. And uh total is eight hundred and fifty a gemma. And when you add it to the four fifty for color nuts, you have one thousand three hundred a gemma. Then one oh.
So much, Maryland.
God bless you, God bless you.
God bless you guys.
Thank you, Maryland.
Okay, and um once again, I I will call in Virginias. So Virginia is supporting the P M visit with four hundred a gemma.
Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you, Virginia.
There any other states in the house? New Jersey, Minnesota, Oregon?
Is Virginia with the one hundred already called or is it included?
That's a total of, you mean for Virginia, that's a total of five hundred.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any others, any other states in the house?
California's hand is up.
Okay, um. Minnesota, Oregon, New Jersey.
You have California's hand up.
Oh.
Uh. Yeah, so uh for California, for Beafra's in California, um. We agreed that um each uh member can come up today, uh make extra donation. Uh so I'm looking forward for them to come up. But there's some extra money, um Mark Genesis, uh thirty a gemma. Uh Mister Manuel A ten a gemma, Doctor Ijoma Isa. Ten a gemma and Vivian Kids, ten a gemma, making it two hundred and ninety a gemma for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um. Honorable Apara.
We have a New Jersey admin.
Okay.
Chairman. Over to you, Chairman.
All right, uh uh good afternoon, everyone. We, Jersey will take the color nut. I will take a lot of behalf of New Jersey with a hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And the visit? So it, A P M, A P M visit? You wanna make, you know, just take care of it now or add it? New Jersey, okay.
Anyone can pick color, anyone can support you, if you want to pick color. Anyone can pick color as well. The floor is open if you want to pick color. Support the A P M's visit. The floor is open before we go to the next item.
Uh honorable Apara.
Yes, my honorable rep.
Okay, okay. I need you to include the uh uh P M A P M's visit also. They can pick up the color and their donation for that uh. Uh for P M A P M.
Okay, um. Our honorable Apara, um the New Jersey admin, Honorable Chairman. He needs to say something, but he's muted. If you can make me co-host, please, thank you.
Yeah, I gave him co-host before maybe network lost it. He's back on co-host now. Chairman, you still have it back now, you cannot unmute yourself. Marzey Chairman.
Okay, I, yeah, I can see that. Yeah, I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to have, I'm still, uh I'm going to make a. Jersey will make a contribution for the, for this particular visit. That would be uh later. Um still uh. Still waiting for them to send me information on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The floor is open for. Your donations. Support for A P M visits, support for the color nut. We are looking up to other representatives from other countries and continents. It is not just uh U S A, not in South America, uh town hall. So let's make it a universal thought to all of us. So come in and support uh U S A A P M's town hall meeting. So that when we also come over to your uh continent, there will also be a hand to you. We have our honorable minister, Doctor Sam. Over to you, sir.
Uh greetings to everyone, special greetings to uh A P M. So far, he's doing a great job. Greetings to the other honorable members, cabinet admins and rep and all Beafra's here today. I welcome uh A P M for his first visit to. America with uh five hundred dollars. A gem.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, honorable Doctor Sam. Thank you so much. Bless you, miss. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Sam.
Thank you, thank you. We have um Italian rep, engineer Nadi, honorable engineer Nadi, over to you. Unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening and all.
You can use your camera if you want, you can use your camera.
I'm I'm trying to put it on, but it's not responding, it's saying you are not authorized. Okay, no problem. Thank you, it's now on.
Yeah.
Um good evening. Honorable Sonia Apara and all you, all the members of the media. Thank you a lot for all the work, all the battle, your fighting for us to move forward. Thank you. Thank you, our A P M that is in, is visiting America now. Uh how can he be here and Italy will not do something? Italy will do what it can, you know, would you look at your numbers? Not to waste the time. Thank you and welcome uh to America with you all in um in uh America. Uh I have one of my member that just gave us, gave a directed fifty a gemma for this. Um Nenaya Okereka, Nenaya Okereka. And I need to, I'm supporting with fifty a gemma. That is great. Thank you all. That is a little weekend. Have at least to make our um A P M um test something, you know, with you, with you all there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You so much, engineer money.
Thank you, our honorable rep, amizer. Thank you, our honorable rep. Cabinet, Italia has answered their name. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Anurika, Anurika, over to you. Unmute yourself. Anurika, unmute yourself just once.
Good evening, everybody. Are you hearing me?
Yeah, good evening. Yes, loud and clear.
Greetings to all our comrades and all the cabinets. I welcome you people. On behalf of Bridge Odemegu State, we are picking the color not with fifteen thousand AJ.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Odemegu people. Thank you, Odemegu state. Thank you. Thank you. All the way from homeland. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Um honorable Layo Chuku, Assebo, Australia, over to you.
Okay. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Can you put on my video, please? Thank you.
Yes, oh yes, yes. You can start your video now. You can start your video now. Anyone that needs video, start your video now. Anyone that needs video, start your video now. Anyone that needs video, start your video now. Anyone that needs video on, start your video now. All right, honorable, go ahead. Layo Chuku.
Yeah, thank you, our flipper firm, the flipper firm of our own time. I really appreciate your work. You are the real gatekeeper. Thank you, behalf France. Thank you, US. Thank you, our, thank you, our APM. Sorry? Someone is talking.
Who is talking?
Uh the fifty.
Go ahead, go ahead. I think he's communicating with another person.
Okay, yeah. Okay, sorry about that, sorry about that. Yeah, greeting behalf France. I really appreciate all the genuine behalf France for standing up for the truth because it's only truth can stand the test of time. Like I said, I am a student of Radio Biafra under the professorship of our leader Martin Nandikan. He is my prophet. I call him prophet, my prophet. I really appreciate everyone for the wonderful job we are doing to restore our dignity, our freedom, and our nation called Biafra, United States of Biafra. Without wasting much of your time, I just want to use this opportunity to remind behalf France that it's not anywhere, it's not anywhere you see someone on YouTube talking about Biafra, talking about whatever, you start listening to the person be- because I saw that fool, that uh Ding Babini, talking about hundred and fifty million. I wanna ask behalf France, have you guys ever seen that guy in our program before? Who is he? So why are people listening to him? Why even talk, sharing his video or talking about what he's saying? I just wanna remind behalf France for that. Uh without wasting much time, I'm gonna use a hundred a gemma to pick up color for Australia and also I'm gonna use fifty thousand AJ to pick up color for my state, Odemegu state. And also I wanna use this opportunity to remind Odemegu state to desist from Ngozi Orabeze, what she's doing. Ngozi Orabeze is from Odemegu state. She's bringing a bad name to our state. She and her daddy Alama. We must reject them. We must desist from what they are doing. We don't know where Ngozi Orabeze is coming from. Ngozi Orabeze was sent to destroy what we are doing. You guys can see it. We have to reject her and desist what she's doing. Thank you, Odemegu state. Thank you, Australia. Thank you, United States of Biafra. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Marzey.
Thank you, Ozzy man. Wonderful brother, God bless you.
Honorable.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, well.
Thank you, our honorable.
And I like his, I like your shirt, honorable. Are you?
That's behalf France spirit.
Yes, keep it up.
Thank you, honorable Layo. More hands, more hands, more hands. More hands, come and take a color for your state, take color, take color for your country, take for your family, take for yourself. We have a honorable Makeo Opa, over to you, unmute yourself.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Americanas. Good evening, Your Excellency, the acting prime minister, Okechukwu Nkere, and every other cabinet member here in present. It is with great honor that we are here today from Aludo State in Biafra land. A couple of us are here to appreciate this effort and support what the APM is doing and what all of us are doing. On behalf of uh the people and government of Aludo, I am donating fifty thousand AJ to support what is going on here. And I want to also You can't hear you.
He kicked, he's kicked out network.
On the lighter note.
He's back, he's back.
Okay, he's back. We must add, not Orabeze. Am I here, am I being heard?
Yes, yes.
Hey, wait, uh honorable Makeo Opa, we missed that side where you corrected something about COS.
Yes, I just wanted to correct because uh once we introduce the chief of staff to the APM, the moment I says chief of staff, the next thing that comes is Orabeze. So we need to correct, add a little emphasis. This is a chief of staff is chief of staff to the APM, not chief of staff to Bridge. Uh that uh that a funny, funny explanation. So.
No, she has expired.
Yes, so we, I want to also use this opportunity to invite Americans to Aludo State welcoming of the APM on the ninth of February twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, uh honorable Makeo Opa, um send me the the date and time of that to your uh publication so that I'll print the flyer for you because you guys are taking long on the flyer. So the publicity should be out there already so that uh everyone would catch up. Send me the date and the time of the event so that I'll work on the flyer for you. The flyer doesn't take long, same day you can get it. All right. Honorable Makeo Opa, I hope that is copied. Is he still here?
Yeah.
Uh if he's not here.
You must pass to him.
Okay, thank you. All right, we can have a honorable Okeo, chairman rep, over to you.
Nde won, uh good evening. Am I, am I coming up, please?
Very well.
I beg, I beg, before I enter, uh to land the, utun, then gonna my uh as a para, Abarawa, don't want. I think it's about taking off color. Uh I would say I would better speak in Igbo. I read one, one story today, somebody go church, they asked them to pray. He started speaking in tongues. Before you know it, they start praying. I say, Lord, if not for me, you you are nothing without me. He was trying to speak English.
English, no problem.
He said, Lord, without me, you are, you are nothing. And you're speaking in tongues. As it's about picking color, we call it, any water, Ardi water endo. Kinda, I got a corando. This is the, uh this is the first uh town hall meeting. And uh we cannot be here without uh uh picking color. Eat the color as we eat it too, eat life and prosperity. So I'm saying uh I won the Aludo, I guess, so Parang could crush our county. Uh to support uh this occasion, I will use a fifty a gemma on behalf of Aludo and extending their invitation to all in their forthcoming uh town hall meeting. Thank you and God bless us all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable, okay.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you, thank you. And then let this be a point of contact to every other state and countries filing for your uh town hall meetings. Yes, do it ASAP. Don't wait, don't wait before others will be scheduled finish. If others pick up the schedule finish, your own will come for December. So go and file in now, go through the European rep, file in for your town hall meeting so that you get the quickest available seat. Honorable Christian Anaka, over to you.
Will you guys send the receipt though, please?
The receipt. Cancel it to European rep.
Okay. I welcome you, the APM to United States of America during the homeland. I want to thank every wonderful member that have been here. Even people have been so, more than wonderful. What is not enough to to this, to describe the quality of stuff of gentlemen that are here. I don't want to destroy this grammar. So let me take it step by step. Uh on behalf of my states, Aludo states, I'm using twenty thousand AJ to pick, to pick color on behalf of my states. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Marzey.
Thank you. It'd be like saying, uh, Aludo don't come.
Aludo don't walk out.
Aludo don't come, oh, they come with full force.
I've uh before, I'll look at the attack again, Aludo.
Aludo, Aludo. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. The floor is still open. We have Steven Wajisaz. Steven Wajisaz, over to you. Steven Wajisaz, over to you. Unmute yourself, Steven. You have the mic, Steven, go ahead.
I'm here. Uh greetings, everybody. Uh Okabwanda Aludo, now still Aludo people. Uh so I want to join my other Aludo people to say, come with the what, ten thousand AJ with Roger, Nde won.
Nde won.
Nde won, thank you, man.
My heart.
Bless you.
Yes, we hear you. Nde won, Aludo, Nde won, Nde won, Nde won.
Nde mela, Udo Dirono, the Aludo.
Nde won.
The other states too.
I can see that um Aludo is using a pattern. So to do publicity for their uh town hall meeting. These Aludo, these Aludo people, they don't have to play for everywhere.
Yeah, that's a heavy pattern.
Must you see everything?
It's a wise one.
Oh, you could, you could now.
Anyway, politics is allowed as far as we can vouch for more funds to come into town.
Yes, yes. Support, support it.
It is allowed. Anurika, over to you, Anurika. Unmute yourself.
Yeah, hello, good evening all. I come again.
Welcome back.
Are you here? Yeah, welcome back. All right, on behalf of Lagos liaison, our admin, the network is kicking him out. So he told me to pick the color on behalf of Lagos liaison with a sum of of ten thousand AJ. Thank you all. May God bless us. We must survive. No matter the obstacle, the light must shine. So we don't care for whatever the other group are doing. I remember when the god sent the Gideon to a war, he he only picked only three hundred men to fight and they, they won the, they won the war. So we are going to win this war. In Chukwokikabiama, he say, he say, he say, thank you all.
Thank you.
He say. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Before we go to the next thing, honorable Emily K, please give us a minute. Let us um remind behalf France of um the inauguration ceremony of um the headquarters office in um Maryland. We are in office where we have everything. We are not in a psychiatric hospital. For those that have psychiatric hospital as their office.
Ndeala.
So we want to show you so that you know that you were once here before your madness started. So you should know where you should be because uh our PM said all of you should concentrate on our Biafra. Uh huh, not to go AWI. Okay, let's, uh we have to hand before we go to that jingle. Honorable, uh COS, over to you.
Um Viko, I think Kamu Talo Lo, Alanso Ojiu with fifty a gemma, Viko. This is our, our first town hall meeting. Alanso cannot be left out. Can I tell Alanso Ojiu with fifty a gemma, Dallo No?
Thank you, welcome, Alanso.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. God bless.
Alanso has landed, Alanso has landed. Nkechuku. Marzey Kechuku, over to you, unmute yourself.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Marzey Kechuku is uh touching the color with the sum of uh ten AJ from Odemegu state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marzey.
Odemegu, thank you. Thank you, Odemegu. Thank you, thank you. Adazi. Adazi, unmute yourself.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Taking the color with the sum of fifty a gemma.
Thank you, thank you, Adazi.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, in a uh greeting fellow behalf France, I know what we are doing is not easy, but uh we have to be strong. Please, if you don't allow me, let me just uh, if somebody can tell me what move is this, why the music is playing, please go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Please, so that we, we just wanna make sure that when they think we'll be crying, but at the same time, we'll be fighting, fighting for what we believe. Go ahead. I want somebody to tell me what move is this. Go ahead with the music. This is our pride movement, there is a flag move, there is a different move. If you know this move, you know what is. Our current president, there's a problem, this is not move. Our enemy, share for you. Your pride was history.
Yes, sir.
This is a movement of one or two.
Before we send you come work.
Now we there here.
Then they come. You put your. Don't touch my head. You put your.
Now I am. I am man. I am man. I am man.
This is our year. Whether they like it or not. If you know this sound, you know what sound is it? Who sound, can you judge it sound? Who can you judge it sound? Yes, sir, man. Tell your story. In Nigeria, do you talk to, can you judge it? The man can't, the man can't.
Oh, but they can, yeah, but they can.
Yes, sir, now we there here.
FPM with swag. FPM with swag. FPM with swag. Why they think? They will bring us down.
No shaking.
They will bring that stuff down. Your pride was history. We do what we do as free people.
Yes, sir.
We desire to live. We desire to live in the land. That to move Okeke Abiama. Our God have given us. Our enemy, share for you, play this music one more.
How many people know one or two?
Honorable FPM, keep the fire.
We not giving up.
Yes.
Our Abiama is right.
FPM was right.
FPM was right.
It's no day market, though.
Yes, sir.
I bought over, I bought over. As long as the creator of the universe is supporting our comp. As long as we are not the one that created ourselves. Our heavenly Father, Abiama, great earth. They have given us enough to be able to live as a people. We are not terrorists, we are fighting a just cause.
Yes.
Let my people go.
Yes.
Release Martin Amikam. Release our Prime Minister Martin Simon Ebro. You're fighting a just cause. We desire to live our people, our enemy, yes, sir.
Yes. Now we there here. Be there, all the.
FPM with swag. They will bring you down. The more, who look at you.
Enemies are crying. Yes.
Nigeria's new president, if you like, find the whole staff. The Africa must follow the, the brothers. We are not Nigerian, we never be Nigerian. Nigeria is a terrorist country.
It is.
I'm a Biafran.
A bloody.
We, we love ourselves, join to the terrorist country.
Yes.
We suffered among us. He suffered among us, repent. What will he profit you when you kill your own? What will he profit you when you kill your own? Ask yourself, are you better off near the corner? No, we need Biafran.
Fabon Tike, repent. Biafran must come.
What you see, can you kill your own?
Ah, I am.
Fall back, fall back to the original structure, to be bigger.
I am man. I am man. Yes, sir.
That is stupid, if I just, we take my job again. Now, tell me, whose move is this one? Now, sir.
I am man. I am man.
Thank you, thank you.
There were. There were, thank you, thank you fellow Biafrans. I see all the honorable ministers in the house. Thank you all for being here. Thanks fellow Biafrans. We welcome our enemies. If you're one of the enemies we have. We welcome you so you can observe and see how we do things. And we believe our enemies, they know who we are. They know we're good people, they know we are not terrorists, they know we are fighting a just cause. If you're one of the enemies watching, ask yourself a question. What crime do the Biafran people commit? Ask yourself question. Have the Biafran people invaded your community? Ask yourself question. Have the Biafran people terrorized you? Ask yourself question. Have the Biafran people tried to, forced you abandon your religion? And worship their god? Ask yourself question. Have the Biafran people forced on you in any way? If you're one of them, have you been to the Biafran land? Without the Biafran showing you a full hospitality? Have you been to Biafran land and the Biafran people reject you? Or chase you out of their land? The answer is no. Ask yourself question. One hundred and thirty years ago, the Biafran territory, what is it called? Is it called the Nigerian terrorist state? Ask yourself question, our enemies, I'm asking you this question. Your father, your grand grandfather. Did they anyhow tell you a story? How Biafran is part of them? I believe you will answer no. So, why do you choose to kill Biafrans? Why don't you want the Biafrans go? Feral of our enemies? Why don't you let the Biafran go? What crime do Biafran people commit? Biafrans are people that wherever they go. They work hard, they blend in that community. They fight hard to be part of that community. They don't beg. They try to do whatever they can. To obey the law of that community. In most cases, they even marry from that community. They make their place, their home. Example is the terrorist country zoo called Nigeria. In Lagos of the zoo terrorist country called Nigeria. The Biafran people develop Lagos. The Biafran people are the economic hub of Lagos. Lagos is the most popular city or state in the zoo country called Nigeria. What about the federal capital called Abuja? The Biafran people develop Abuja. The Biafran people make what the zoo country called Nigeria worry is. And what happened to the Biafran territory? The zoo country make sure. They forced the Biafran people to leave their territory while seeking for a greener pasture. They make sure there is no government presence in Biafran. They make sure the seaport is not oper- operatable, is not operational. They make sure all the airports are not in proper condition or not functionable. They make sure there is no liaison office of any foreign country or embassy. They make sure the Biafrans. They try to make Biafrans abandon their home. And the Biafrans have no choice than to leave their territory, travel all over the globe. Fighting to survive. And the remaining in Biafran land, the terrorist country called Nigeria. They do everything they can to kidnap, kill Biafrans, behead Biafrans. The world in general, when I say the world, the United Nations. They believe Nigeria is a terrorist state. The whole world know Nigeria is a terrorist state. Why then are they supporting Nigeria? They should be truthful to themselves. The world in general, you all need to let Biafran go. You all have to stop supporting the terrorist country called Nigeria. Be truthful to yourself. The treatment that the Biafran people have received from the so-called United Nations. That I don't know what. that I don't know what the hell they're united. Biafrans have been killed over five million, over three million children. We are starved to death and the world is not speaking. Share to the world leaders that know about this and they decide to close their ear. They decide to act like they don't see. Our leader Mazin Nambikano is in the hand of the terrorist country that the whole world condemned Nigeria. They know Nigeria is a terrorist country. And what is the so-called United Nations doing about it? Our prime minister in Finland, we call for so-called questioning and the Finland authority, well, no, Nigeria is a terrorist state. We believe justice must be done. We believe the Finland authority know why Mazie Simon Ewa is fighting to free his people. Finland fought Russia to free themselves and they regained their freedom from Russia. What's wrong with Mazie Simon Ewa fighting to free his own people here in United States of America? There is a time when Matuluta King said, he have a dream when everything will be alright. We Biafran people, we have a dream that will surely be free. Matuluta King fought for freedom. Mandela fought for freedom. Gandhi from India fought for freedom. What we are doing is what we supposed to do. We wanna be free. Maybe tomorrow I might be their next target. If that's true, Biafrans are over seventy million. Someone else will rise. We cannot leave our destiny to those that cannot manage it. If the United Nations can manage our destiny, let them step up and do the writing. If the world can manage our destiny, let them step up and do the writing. There is killing going in Biafran. There is war going in Biafran. They are not speaking during our president Donald John Trump. Arise, the daughter media from Nigeria. When I mention the name Biafra with my flag, they quickly dismiss me by pointing finger thinking I'm going to talk with one of the so-called producer there or one of the colleagues, not knowing he just want to get me out of the scene there because they are so ashamed to talk about Biafra. What's wrong to talk about Biafra? What crime have Biafran people committed? Can you please educate me if I don't know? Can you please tell me what have Biafra done wrong? We did not create ourselves. We found ourselves in our God-given land. The land belong to Biafra. The land don't belong to Nigeria. The land don't belong to Nigeria. Arise news should be ashamed of themselves. They're supposed to be unbiased news media. They quickly dismiss me because they don't want to hear about Biafra. And the same Biafran people made the useless zoo country called Nigeria what Nigeria is today. What crime do we commit? Quote me wrong if I'm lying. What crime do the Biafran people commit? Do we deserve this? Yes or no? Biafra must be free. Freedom is not given. We will take our freedom, whether the world like it or not. A lot of us that live in the Western world, we know what true democracy is. We wanna live a normal life. We don't wanna live like some Dundee people. We don't wanna live like zombies. We are not no mandate people. We love good thing. We love civilization. We love education. We love anything good and shareable. We are not terrorists. We can see the terrorists in the world and the activities. Biafran's activity is not that of terrorists. We are civilized people. We just wanna be free. Let my people go. Let Biafra go. Let Mazin Nambikano be released. He did nothing wrong. Let the prime minister Mazie Simon Ewa go, release him. Let Dr. Chua Yobad go. The world is yearning for freedom. The world is yearning for peace. The Biafran people will never take any war to Nigerian state. Rather, they invade our territory. They rape our children, rape our women, rape anything rapeable, kill, slaughter and the rest of the world cape moth. Tomorrow, you will tell me you believe in God. You tell me what God you worship. Is that what your God asking to do? Is your God, the God that asks you to rape innocent women, to behead innocent women, to kill, to destroy? If that's what your God asking, shame to you and shame to that your God, then God. Let us be. We wanna live in a country that we be one of the best. We wanna live in a country that the whole world we admire, that the whole world we wanna visit, that the whole world we wanna say, what a beautiful country. Let me have a vacation, me and my family to Biafran land. Just the same way people visit Dubai, even from the great state of the United States of America, people visit to tour Dubai from here. Why can't Biafra be? Why can't Amazonia be free? Why can't Eritrea have a true democracy? We wanna be free. Freedom is not given, it's taken. Since the rest of the world refuse to give us our freedom, we need their cooperation. We need their assistance. They can go ahead. They can go ahead and support them. If they don't, we will get our freedom, whether you like it or not. Biafra must be free. We have our friends, our sisters' country that will be joining us and I'm gonna hand this over to the media team so we can take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, APM for the wonderful speech. Thank you, APM.
Thank you.
Thank you, APM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The great man.
It was that I care.
I respect you. Okay.
Thank you, APM.
Please, let me put this on while we fix one or two.
Okay.
We play this while we fix one or two. While we fix one or two.
Call it the political resurrection. Some say it's the comeback king, but days, weeks, all the build up. And right now, we're just a couple of minutes away to the inauguration of Donald Trump as the next president of the United States. Yes, the forty-fifth president, becoming the forty-seventh president of the United States. A second term for Donald Trump coming back to the White House. I'm right now in front of the Capitol Hill. You can see the background to me because of the cold condition. The normal inauguration technology outside is not happening. We know that, right? It's happening inside this Capitol Hill called the Capitol Rotunda where Donald Trump will be inaugurated as the forty-seventh president of the United States. I have right now, now joining me arise US correspondent Jeremiah Boloko. She's been here at the build up to the election, the election proper, the results and of course, the comeback victory of Donald Trump. Jeremiah, what has been the situation so far? Take us, walk us through what has happened so far.
Okay, this year's ceremony is gonna be held in the US Capitol Rotunda Hall due to the weather conditions, which at this moment is twenty-four degrees. It feels like fourteen degrees and it's really cold. So anybody planning to come out, you really keep up for the weather. But so far, so good. I'm gonna take you through some of the events that is about to be held today. Right now, the president-elect Donald Trump is at the church of St. John's Church service. Thereafter, he will be going for a tea, which has been a tradition for the US inauguration ceremony. They're gonna be having tea with the current president at the moment, Joe Biden and the first lady. There afterwards, the real ceremony, which is taking the oath of office, will commence, which will be around twelve noon and all that. So another highlight of the week has been the Matuluta King Junior Day, which is a day of profound significance for all Americans. I mean, this was a great leader that had a vision of equality, peace and unity. I mean, he, it is a powerful reminder of, it is a powerful reminder of racial segregation. I mean, Americans, especially for the African-American society. I mean, those are the one some of the highlights. Another highlight we're gonna look at through is, this is the first time the tradition of foreign leaders are being invited to this ceremony. The normal traditions, other leaders are not supposed to attend. And some leaders from Africa has been hoping to come, especially from Nigeria and Mozambique. We don't know if they got the invite, but one of the major leaders was supposed to come was the president from the Chinese president, Xi Jinping. It was supposed to come in and he has turned out that invite, but he's gonna be sending some bodies into, some delegates into the ceremony. And also, Arise was invited especially for this occasion, which is a big step forward.
Thank you very much. Of course, also the tech kings, TikTok, Elon Musk and Co will also be here. Now, if my camera can just take us around, take us around so you're able to see the scenario. A lot of people gathered round right in front of the Capitol Hill. Like Jeremiah rightly said, it's a public holiday, Matuluta King. The inauguration will be taking place indoors or into the freezing condition, the icy situation, the cold temperature. So, so you're seeing a three sixty view of just around the Capitol Hill. So now, let's begin to talk to some Americans who are right here with us. What's your name?
Ogechukun Kere.
Okay, okay. So you're Nigerian?
Yeah, I'm a Biafran.
You are Nigerian.
I'm a Biafran.
You are Nigerian. Okay, okay, okay. So let's also talk to, let's also talk to, yeah. So let's also talk to the, the. So, yeah. So what's the situation like after the build up to the inauguration of?
Right, so, yeah, so I'm here. My name's Lashar Solis. I'm the lobbyist in Washington DC. I represent a number of African clients and leaders. I have with me, for example, representative from the Amazonian Governing Council, who our firm represents. I also represent the Biafra Republic Government.
Okay, so he's from the Amazonian.
Yeah.
Okay. Also, talk to us. It's a comeback for Donald Trump. What do we expect? Do we expect something better for him?
Yes, of course, especially for us, the Amazonian people. It would please the Nigerian and Biafran public to understand.
Let's talk about Trump. Let's talk about Trump.
Of course, we are here because of our own interest, right? We have a mutual understanding with the United States government and what we want Trump to do for the Amazonian people is to speed up and remove Cameroon from.
Okay, okay, okay. So, so we're beginning to get a feel back from, from Americans from the diaspora as well around.
Right, at this time, we are going to bring in the guest of honors that we have and we'll start playing anthems. So I admonish you, if you are seated, while the anthems are playing, you please be standing or you stop your video. You stop your video if you are seated. If you cannot stand, stop your video.
Land of the rising sun below a cherry. Below their homeland of our brave heroes. We must defend our lives or we shall perish. We shall protect our heart from all across. But if the price is that long, we hold it. Then let us die without a shred of fear. Here to be a consecrated nation. Oh, Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood will count our freedom. The wind in sun, the lich and bold, until free shall always be a part of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible, our scale will pass. When we are void, the wounds of battle to heal. We shall remember those who guide us. Then shall our job, let fill the glorious song of victory we scored all might and all. Oh, God, protect us from the hill pitfall. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to heal the human's core. To give an art to count the costly chain. Let all to rule to suffer with resolution. To make this land a land of righteousness. Hail, hail, hail this land of glory. We're the Amazonians, let your loyalty. Rest in peace our Savior, who blessed us of freedom. And allegiance to the heroes who bore the land with their blood. Glory to glory, we rise and never to fall. Here is our mission, glory, we will accompany. Glory, glory, glory to the Father, for making you a nation that's yours forevermore. And the Zonia, land of freedom. You shall live in plenty, eating all of these. And your children shall be like the stars upon. He must, my God, be the worship of his nation. And the Zonia, land of freedom. You shall live in plenty, eating all of these. And your children shall be like the stars upon. He must, my God, be the worship of his nation.
Thank you very much. I invite the APN. So introduce the guest of the day as they join us.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Sunny Aborawa. And thank you, fellow Biafrans, everyone that have tuned in to today's special occasion. Thanks to our sister country, Amazonia. And thanks to also our sister country, Eritrea. And here today, we have the Vice President of the Amazonia Governing Council and also the President of the Eritrea Government in Eza, President Bandura, and the Vice President Julius Ne. And Honorable Sunny, please, can you spotlight them?
Please, let them start your camera. Let the two of them start their camera, please, so that I can pick them up. And they can as well say something so that I can see them. Spotlight your camera, sorry, turn on your camera, then speak. Or meet yourself and speak so that I can see you and spotlight you, please.
The VP for the Amazonian Governing Council, thanks a lot.
So the VP, say something again so that I can pick you. I didn't get you.
Honorable Sunny is VP Dr. Julius. You can see, can you see VP Dr. Julius?
Yeah, yeah, I can see him.
It's one of them.
He's a Mew flag, yeah.
Yes.
And where is the other, yes, Eritrea?
And there's also Amazonia Governing Council as well, I think. And we also have, we also have three of Human Rights and Human Material Service.
Please, could they all turn on their cameras so that we can spotlight?
Then you can see them.
Yeah.
If you could please, sir, so we can easily see, okay.
Who is left to be on the screen? Please say something. Turn on your camera and say something.
This is Akosan, this is Akosan, Secretary for Human Rights and Human Material Service.
Yes, Akosan Akota.
Okay. Now, we are missing the Eritrea President. Where is he? Where is the Eritrea President or Representative? Is he in the Zoom? Could they please start his camera and start his microphone so we can see him?
Can't see him.
What is the name on the Zoom?
APN.
Here you are, one attend.
Honorable Sunny, the President of the Eritrea Government in Eza. He will be logging in in a minute.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all, and you are all welcome. VP, Vice President, Dr. Julius Ne. We really appreciate you, I spoke with you early today. I have some good encouraging words from you as well. You know, because what we already embarked on, we are not going back. And this journey is a journey that have started from the time of our leader, Mazin Namdikanu. So we have come a long way and of which both sister country, we do counsel each other. And you know, rub minds together, get advice and strategy of how we defeat our common enemy. Both the zoo country called Cameroon, they are terrorist country as well. They are a common enemy with the Nigerian terrorist country. So and we have, just as I said, we have come a long way. This bond and this union will be unbreakable. Just like when we visit Donald J. Trump, our president inauguration, which both country, both the Eritrea, both the Eritrea President and the Amazonia, we are, you know, able to secure our spot to be in the inauguration. Wish by the special help of our lobby, mora, global strategies, are able to make that happen. And of which Elias have been working real hard. And one thing people don't really realize or know about is that the ticket is a congressional, you can only get it from the congressional office. So that ticket is not online. You can buy, you have to be invited. So it's not like the post inauguration ticket that maybe you can get online if you want to be part of the party or part of the celebration. But the ticket that we are opportune to get, even the zoo country called Nigeria, they are not invited. The zoo Cameroon are not invited. So that tells you that we are in good hand. And we are working hard to defeat our common enemy. Because the fight that we are fighting is a just cause. We are fighting to liberate and free our people. We deserve to be free. We deserve to live as people. I quote from Dr. Fu Ayoba himself, where he said, "Freedom is not given, it's taken." So that is exactly what we are doing. We are taking our freedom. If the world refuse to give us or cooperate, we will take it. But we ask for their assistance and their cooperation. So we are not putting out fight there. We just asking peacefully, because we are both peaceful nation. And we believe that they will turn around and support us. You are welcome to this town hall meeting with the Biafran people today. It's a pleasure for the Vice President of the Amazonia to be here and the Amazonia Governing Council to be here as well. And of course, soon the instructor of the American Cyber Squad, RACS, right, here to be here. And here come our good friend again from the Eritrea. We have done a lot together. He been in the Baltimore office here, that's the head of, head quarter or head office of the Biafra Republic Government. He been here several times. And we have opportunity to also, he made it, we have the opportunity to see him in Finland as well during our re-declaration. And he actually spoke and encouraged the Biafran people, the need of the Biafran people to be free. And also in Eritrea, Eritrea need to be free from the oppressor regime that they are. So we live in a democratic world whereby we want all of us to be more civilized and practice democracy. And during our re-declaration in his native Finland, we also have the Amazonia delegate, heavy, I believe, if I pronounced it correctly. So he actually make my job easy for me that very well, that very day, because he spoke very well. You are all welcome to the Biafran, Biafran Town Hall Meeting, which is hosted in US today through Beijing. And I'm so delighted and my fellow Biafrans to welcome all of you. Our leader Mazin Namdikanu and our Prime Minister, they will all be happy for this very occasion. Thank you. And we invite the Vice President Julius Ne. Talk to the Biafran people and the Amazonia people likewise, our sister country, Eritrea. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Acting PM. It is a pleasure for me to attend the first town hall of the Biafran people. I also wish to salute the members of Cabinet of the Biafran Government in exile. I also wish to sincerely thank all the Biafran people here today and those that could not make it, those in the diaspora and those in Biafran land who have stood firm to assert their right to determine their own political, social, economic and cultural way of life. The alliance between Biafra and Amazonia did not start today. Biafrans and Amazonians are one people, united by geography, by culture, and now by aspirations to be free from the different terrorist zoo and jungle governments, both in Cameroon and in Nigeria. Fellow Biafrans, the adage goes, "A liberation is not a walk in the park." So if there is any one of you out there in here in this town hall today who thinks that your freedom will be given to you on a platter, you have not yet started. You will have to fight, and fight, I mean. You would not only fight the zoo government in Nigeria as we are fighting the jungle government in Cameroon. You also fight your own brothers and sisters who have been recruited by the enemy to make sure that you don't reach your destination. You also fight your own brothers and sisters. We have done that in Amazonia. Who, for personal interest, would not want to follow the aspiration of the Biafran people. When you come across these challenges, bear in mind that they are learning curves. In every quest for freedom, the nationalists and those who pursue freedom against those who don't want freedom, who want continuous colonization is in the ratio of one to five. It therefore means that it's only about one percent or less that would stand with you to the finish line. For the Amazonian people, we have seen actors come and go. We have seen movements rise and fall. It is all part of the process. But if the Biafran people, you are fighting for the flag, under the flag, with the flag and with the people, you will remain standing. If you are fighting not to enable Nigerian government to continuously rule Biafra with impunity, if you are fighting not for your own self-interest, if you are fighting not because you think Biafra will be free tomorrow morning, then this is the revolution for you. We have seen it all. Why Nigeria is scared is not because we are in the diaspora or the people on the ground are agitating. Nigeria and Cameroon are scared because we have picked up arms and we are unapologetic to that. It is our self-right to defend ourselves when we are faced with oppression. It is a universal right to pick up arms, to defend yourself if the responsibility to protect by the international community is not invoked. It is your right to exist in freedom, to have dignity as a people. And so let nobody, let no one tell you that you cannot fight. They can incarcerate Namdikanu. They can incarcerate PM Simon Epa. They can incarcerate Dr. Chol Lucas Ayaba. They can incarcerate me tomorrow, but the spirit of freedom is ingrained in our people. So many, PM Simon Epa will rise. So many Dr. Chol Lucas Ayaba will rise onto the finish line. And as the Acting PM has said, we have crossed the river. There is no turning back. All they need from you is to stand firm and know that there are going to be challenges. There are going to be infiltrators, even within your own government and within your own movement. But do not barge. Fight for the flag, fight with the flag. Fight for the flag, fight with the flag, fight with the people and for the people of Biafra. That is what has made us to stand the test of time. Let me take you to memory lane. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen up to twenty twenty, the Ambazonia governing council was not the most. Popular and not even the most light. But today, our people depend on us. Because we stood for the people, we stood for the ideas, we knew what we were in for, we had the strategies. And we knew that in order to fight a colonialist, you fight the method for method, ideal for ideal. Communication for communication, diplomacy for diplomacy. And today we can see that the stars are where aligned. Whereby there is a new government in the United States whereby our people are both energized. And our resolve to be free is unwavering. So I call on all of you. To do whatever it takes. Take out your last dime. Support the boys and girls championing your resistance on the ground. Make sure that the enemy knows your resolve and that nothing else will suffice. Because for us, Ambazonia, we will fight to the last man standing. For us, Ambazonia is either we are free or we all die. There is no way Cameroon will ever rule Ambazonia again with one Ambazonian alive. They will do with no Ambazonian alive. That is where we are. It doesn't matter whether they bring in the Chadians. They brought them in, we hobbled them in the battlefield, the Chadians run. They brought in the French, we hobbled them. Cameroon knew they were going to beat us in two weeks. We are talking A B S. And in a fight where David, where David is unable to be beaten by Goliath. It therefore means David is winning. And I can assure you, we are winning. I can assure you, with the Biafran resistance in the area of Bakasi, Cameroon is also feeling the pinch. I can assure you with your support in terms of propagating our cause, the human rights abuses of Cameroon and Nigeria. We are winning. Victory is never easy. You have to fight your way and fight sharp. Ambazonia, fight sharp, Biafra to freedom comes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. Thank you so much.
When they think after holding Doctor Chua Yoba, that will be it. We proved them wrong. When the Nigerian terrorist state think after kidnapping our leader Mazin Namdikan from Kenya. We also proved them wrong. This fight, we we all fight together and at the end victory will be us. Let me also welcome our uh president, our good friend. Mister Bandura, President Banduray, President of Eritrea Government in Eza, thank you.
Honorable sir, okay, thank. I'm trying to get myself unmute. Uh primarily, I want to give uh my world warm salute to all of you. Uh yes, the newly acquired friends of uh Ambazonian. And I was very proud to work with the Republic of Biafran Government in exile. Uh I think I got me good friends uh at the initial moment when we heard of the Ambazonian. Uh but of the Biafran actually. Uh people thought all the Biafran case was all said and done. Uh a lot of them were not following as it is uh as it is needed. Some of the work we're doing today, maybe we should have done it twenty years ago, maybe thirty years ago. However, uh better late than never. Some of the type of fight we were doing uh in Eritrea, we have a lot of experience. We fought for thirty one years to be free liberated from Ethiopia. Unfortunately, the people has been betrayed uh by the leader we trusted, uh meaning. Uh he kind of oppressed the people for the following thirty four years. Our name, the nickname we've been given is the North Korea of Africa. And you know what does it mean? For all these years, Eritrea did not have any election. We didn't have any constitution and gross uh violation of human rights that is happening in there. After thirty one years fight and we still are fighting for thirty four years to eliminate one this person that is oppressing the people. From the small population that we are in, majority of people running away everywhere, through every corner. All of our youth, they couldn't work, they couldn't go to school, they couldn't create family. So the best deal they have is just free the nation and go elsewhere. When we have all the means, when we have all the uh uh resources. Uh we are not poor, we should have been done a lot better, but we just kept going down and down. And almost the uh Stone Age where people are living in the dark. They don't have medication, they don't have enough education, they don't have, I mean, for God's sake, the only one university we had, he shot it down. We had a hundred uh uh factories, they're all gone. The only thing we have left is the beer company, uh you know what that mean? Uh so this is what we've been going, so as we met with the Biafran. Uh I think we said, yeah, I was very interested to know more about them. At this right moment, even the Eritreans are very uh interested in knowing further about the Biafran history. And now we're gonna add the Ambazonian uh history in that sense. By becoming together, we all kind of buy a little sense. Uh by coming together, we all can have a story which is bigger. We all now became even to work in the same office, which that means a lot. Uh our cooperation, our exchange of idea. Our giving each other an advice or even share from our experience, I think a lot can be done. This collaboration between the Biafran and the Ambazonian, I think it's a winning uh type because I do follow. Uh as things are happening on the ground. This is not nineteen sixty seven seventy, this is completely different. What they used to do, uh blockade, what have you. At this right moment, with the existence of the uh Ambazonians, a lot of things is happening. Uh I even heard and read a lot where they are even infiltrating, getting in inside the Nigerian. And I know what kind of job is getting done, so by being together, I think this is our time, I always said. This is our time for Eritrea, this is the time for Biafran Republic, this is the time for Ambazonians. And other things that I need to tell you, uh what we said, we should have been done twenty years ago. At this right moment, uh we feel proud, we have a lot of friends inside the E S governments. We started early on, uh we kind of shook up the government because he's paranoia of the United States. I've been in many meetings where the congresspeople were very interested to hear the story of Biafra. They were very familiar and they want to hear more, they want to learn more. So they became very interested. Uh you have a good friends like Doctor uh uh Ruben. Uh you have a good friend like Tibo Nagy, which is a, I always have a good communication with him. And he talks a lot about, and we have some friends that are coming in that desk, what we call African desk. So we got friends, we just wisely, not to the point that we become nuisance to them, they know about our story. The only thing they knew, we have to come with our own plans, what sort of program we want to get done. And we flat upfront where we have to tell them what we want to get done. With this Trump administration, a lot of things can come up, even not, some new nations may exist. I really truly believe some of those story I hear in practice, uh uh Somalia, for instance. Uh when it's separated from Somalia, it's about thirty one years, but they've been handling their business pretty good. When the other center of Somalia was having a lot of problem. Therefore, even up to this last election they had, it was a democratic election. So the whole world is impressed. Many countries went to visit and now at this right moment, they are really thinking to uh recognize Somalia. Which means we're gonna have another new nation of Africa, Africa can afford for so many. Especially if I give you the example of Biafran Republic, you're talking eighty million people. For God's sake, you can force them to be in a forged forced marriage, there is no way. There is no happiness, there is no long term solution for this. The best way is they need to get their divorce. They have to be divorced, and I know the history also, the more I got interested, Ambazonians. Yes, the same cause goes up to the point how we became together and how we became betrayed. Therefore, I think if we all need to live, we don't uh we don't have any ill thinking for Nigeria, we don't have any. Rest, but we want peaceful change. If they don't want the military act, I think let's discuss in a round table. Let's have a parents to sign, let them to be free. And this is how it needs to get done. At this moment, the same way they used to call us. When we fought them, they gave us a name, we are terrorists, what else? But to us, we were, I always say, we were freedom fighters. Because of that, even today, they going call Ambazonians and the Republic of Biafra are terrorists. As far as I'm concerned, they are not terrorists, they are freedom fighters. Because of that, I think it that it doesn't matter what they say, we what we have to do. Some of these leaders, for God's sake, they don't have their in their vocabulary, the word peace, the word negotiation. Uh therefore, if it takes to carry arms, we don't have any choice but to carry arms. Therefore, this newly found friendship, this newly found uh uh cooperation among ourselves. I think we can only make it bigger and our story should be told everywhere. And I'm very thankful, chance, and I'm glad I made it to be part of you guys, thank you.
Thank you, we are the Biafran Republic Government in Eza and its cabinet. We are really pleased with all you're doing. And for you to make it as well to Lati, Finland, thank you, we appreciate you. We are all in this together. Yeah, I remember only this uh month. When we visit Washington D C and we have, we met with some congress and senators. It was amazing, so our message is penetrating. And with the help of our lobbyists, we appreciate them, they are doing a a good job. President, Vice President Julius. Uh I know you have some members of your cabinet here and believe they might want to be part of this great occasion. So uh with your permission, I I can see they are ready to explode. To say, to say, say, uh uh yeah, to send a loud message of freedom. A word of hope and encouragement. Because with this way, we will all get to the finish line to encourage one another. And for us to be having uh something like this more often. Because our people, both the Biafran people, the Ambazonia and the Eritrea. They need to see this uh union getting stronger and stronger. And for us to be working together as well. So uh should I go ahead and call along the cabinets with you, your interice?
Yes, please.
Okay, alright, uh. Oh uh H H H S, uh can you please go ahead and talk to Biafran and Ambazonia and the Eritrea people, thank you.
All hail Biafra.
All hail Biafra.
All hail Biafra.
My vice.
My vice president, as we just spoken about since, uh we are here, I cannot go without saying at least a word. And uh what I want to tell the people of Biafra, first of all, I uh all protocol duly respected. Mister President of uh uh Eritra Government in Exile. And the A P M of Biafra, it was nice meeting you guys. Um in Washington D C at the inaugural of President Trump. Um we had very good exchanges, uh that was wonderful. We had um the R I S T V come to interview us, but it had to run away. Whoever's who's who's ever seen where a journalist runs away from interviewing people. So we we made the runaway. So anyways, um the history behind be between Ambazonia and Biafra is inextricably linked. Um the the zoo in in Nigeria and um the jungle people in La Republic of Cameroon. They have a history of oppression. And what I want to advise the people of Biafra is do not turn back. The world knows the name Nigeria because of Biafra. If there were no Biafra, the word Nigeria will not be known anywhere. Whether we are talking about the football team or we're talking about the uh in Hollywood. It is the presence of Biafra, the talents of the Biafran people that has catapulted that country to very great heights. So you cannot let full any hurtment, you know, lord it over really great minds like you. Um like the president, uh the the uh president exile for for Eritra said. You are eight million people, that is enormous, that is extremely huge. And you are a very great potential in the entire Gulf of Guinea. Uh my my journey to the United States has been incredible. Uh I was a refugee in Biafran. Um La Republic of Cameroon chased us when we stood fighting for freedom. And we were welcomed very open hands uh by families in Enugu. And Kalaba and many other places in Biafran. And when I told them my story, they 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 also, you know, talked to us about when, you know, Nigeria was persecuting them. And then they were running into southern Cameroles at the time. And then we, our parents, great grandparents gave them, you know, welcome them and stuff like that. So they said they would reciprocate, so we are one people. Uh when I, each time I talk to people and I give my name Akos, they say that looks like a Cam- a Nigerian name or a Biafra name. When I call Akutar, they say that looks like a Biafra name. So um we are one people, um our destiny is inextricably linked. We continue to fight together until we reach the the promised land.
Yes.
Biafra, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mister Kuta, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We also have uh the your uh the name is not a uh. Our, you need, you didn't update the name, you have it as one reason.
As the secretary general of the Ambazonia Governing Council.
Alright, uh secretary general, can you go ahead and talk to the Biafran people and the Ambazonia? Also the Eritrea, thank you.
Uh thank you very much, uh the A P M, uh all protocols duly observed. Uh Mister President of the Eritian Government in Exile. Uh much respect, sir. Uh the Vice President of the Ambazonia Governing Council. Fellow Biafran and fellow Ambazonians and Eritians who have joined this town hall. Uh it is a great honor for me to speak to these honored people in here. Because uh it takes uh someone with a mighty heart. Uh to be able to in in engage in a journey uh that is so difficult. And uh also a journey which has a lot of obstacles. Uh that are even known before you set out. And uh all of us uh who are engaged in fighting. And uh all of us who are engaged in fighting for the liberation and freedom for our people understand the difficulty. And uh we have decided that uh the journey that our people have lived through up to this moment must be uh finished by all. And that uh the freedom of our people must be achieved in our lifetime. And I believe that uh the Biafran people, the Eritrean people and the Amazonian people understand that uh if we don't fight this fight today, we will need to fight it another day. Uh, we have witnessed in the last week uh the inauguration of uh President Trump and all of us, we invited the Amazonians, the Biafrans and the Eritreans, we invited to take part. The Americans to arrive where they are had a very difficult journey also. They were colonized by the British. And in the days of fighting for their own freedom, the days of independence, everything was not smooth. There were those who worked with the royal family in Britain who uh fought against their own people in order to stop the Americans from getting their independence from Britain. And that is just a path that every liberation uh takes in order to be able to arrive uh the, the point of destination that we have chosen. Our common destiny is that we have decided that we will finish the fight and the fight we will finish for our people. We will not pass on this fight to our children. Because that will be like handing a brand and burning fire to your son or to your daughter to carry to the next uh, uh, uh point of contact. And by the time the child arrives, the point of contact, uh, the hands will be burned. So we will be the ones to do this job. The Biafran people have been through a very difficult history. Like each and every one of us, but I want to remind each and every one of us that uh this month, on the thirteenth of January, uh nineteen seventy, fifty-five years ago, uh, they said they had ended the war against the Biafrans. That was after millions of Biafrans had been killed between nineteen sixty-seven and nineteen seventy. And today, uh, they still believe that they can continue to kill and continue to tell the people that there's nothing going on. Uh, we want to remind them that we have not forgotten those years. That fifty-five years ago, they uh tried to uh stop us from continuing to get to where we want to be. They killed millions and yet continued to lie to the people. The Biafrans have risen up at this particular moment and it is our time. And like the uh President of Eritrea in Exile stated, we might have done this twenty years ago. But I think God has a plan for each and every one of us and decided that we are the ones to carry the baton today. And uh the baton, we must carry to the finish line. There will be no stopping at any point and nobody, whether they call themselves infiltrators or enablers or spoilers, whoever they are, they will pay and uh the, the people to de- destroy our uh, uh, uh project and our mission and our march to freedom, but they will fail on the way. We have made up our minds and we are marching to freedom. Uh, Biafran people, Eritrean people, Amazonian people, there is no other way for us to finish this fight but to fight as if the fight depended on us alone. Let us continue to fight and let us continue to work together in order to achieve our objectives. Uh, we have uh the opportunity at this particular moment. We have some people who are listening to us and let us put our voices together so that uh together we can achieve our objectives. I want to appreciate each and every one of you for this opportunity uh to talk to this uh great town hall and I encourage each and every one of us not to relent in their effort. And uh as we continue to work hard and do the things to get our leaders in detention, whether be uh, uh, Marzil Namdikano in, in the jungle or the zoo, or Simon Epa in Finland or Dr. Ayaba in Norway. I want to assure you that your efforts are the efforts that the people of Amazonia, the people of Biafra and the people of Eritrea want to find in order to be able to reach their destiny. These leaders have given their all for us. Let's keep fighting so that one day they will be free. And that one day, our people will rise up and say, thank you for all the work that you have done. Hell, 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 Amazonia, hell, 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 Biafra, hell, 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 Eritrea. Thank you very much, Mister.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Secretary General Obadiah, thank you very much. And uh we have our honorable ministers from the Biafran Republic Government in Eza that we want to say one or two things to our, our, our sister nation here and Honorable Sonny Aparawa. Can you go ahead and uh call upon the Biafran Republic Government in Eza members that are here present in this special occasion, thank you.
Thank you, APM, and thank you, our distinguished dignitaries of Amazonia and Eritrea. Your warm presence is encouraging to us and we really appreciate. I serve in the Department of Media and Communications. And I am gonna bring the Secretary General of the Biafran Government, um Honorable Professor Choma, please say one or two. Please, every members of the cabinet, try to stick to two minutes because of the programs we have. Honorable Professor Choma, I don't know if you're there, you're invited to the floor to say something.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you, our acting PM, Honorable Genkere, the Vice President of the Amazonian Governing Council, Dr. Julius Ninge, the SG of Amazonian Governing Council and the Eritrean President in Exile. And I greet all of the Biafran Republic Government in Exile officials. No need calling names, one by one. All hail Biafra. To the great Biafran citizens, great Amazonian and Eritrean citizens. Thank you for tuning in. And I welcome all of our guests. Thank you for joining us in today's town hall. Even though our Prime Minister is absent, you still found it worthy to come. We also thank you for being friends to our cause because we are fighting the same cause. And as you've all said, there's no point repeating what you've said. One thing is clear, we must be free. Because as you rightly said, there is no Nigeria without Biafra. And for the fact that Nigeria has chosen to keep killing Biafrans without any remorse. The fact that Nigeria has chosen to keep incarcerating our people. They take our resources and impoverish the people. We've complained, we've begged, it fell on deaf ears. Rather, the more we complain, the more we beg, the more they implement their atrocities. So at a point, we said we are done. Now, we're gonna take our freedom. The Biafran people are ready. How would you know that? They went all the way to Kenya to kidnap and rendition our leader. You know, people like myself, when our leader Onyendu Namdikano was preaching, we were like, oh yeah, Nigeria will listen, so we weren't really active. But what awakened people like us was the impunity of the Nigerian state to commit international crime breathily. And we said, no, this has to stop, and stop it has. So we are calling on all citizens. You remember one thing we used to say, when you citizens keep quiet, then the government will mistreat you. You got to stand up and you got to take that freedom. And this message goes to both the Biafrans, the Amazonians and the Eritreans. And in fact, to all the Africans. Because the leaders in Africa are taking advantage of the poor masses. So I welcome you all. Thank you so much as we are trying to figure out what is going on, why the West is behaving the way they're behaving. We are also embracing the new government of the United States. And we are hopeful, starting from the invitation that the three of the countries got to the inauguration of President Trump. We are hopeful that there reads a very bright light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, I Secretary General. And I call on um Minister of Foreign Affairs. Hehehe, Honorable Doctor Bryson.
Uh, okay, now, thank you, thank you everyone.
Please, when I call on the ministers of BIAFIE, do well to introduce your portfolio where you're serving the government as you pick the mic, thank you, Prime Minister, over to you.
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, Honorable Minister of Information. Um, like you said, I'm the uh Biafran Republic Government in Exile Foreign Affairs Minister. Uh, thank you, uh, Acting PM for the wonderful job you are doing. Thank you, uh, the Vice President of uh Amazonia, Dr. Julius Nee. Uh, thank you, the Secretary General of Amazonia for honoring this invitation. Uh, thank you, President Badur of Eritrea Government in Exile. We, and thank you, uh, the other, um, Amazonia, um, representative, I can't see you on the screen, so I'm kind of handicap saying your name, but we met in, in Washington DC on January the twentieth during the um inauguration of um President Trump. And personally, I had one-to-one interaction with many of the delegates from Amazonia. Uh, one particularly told me that they refused to issue him ID card in Cameroon because they thought he, he was a Biafran. I shared my own personal experience. I had to walk from Mfun, the last community in Cross River, across Cross River into the first community in uh, in, in Amazonia, Manferrite. So I, I am fascinated by how Amazonia people and uh Biafrans have this inextricable uh or interwoven cultural and relationship, essentially showing that we are one people. So we are continuing to uh cultivate strong bonds and strong relationships. In Helsinki, uh, twenty twenty-three, when we had the first convention in Finland, Dr. Chou Ayaba was there. He delivered one of the most powerful speeches I've ever listened to. And while he was rendering his speech, he keeps um invoking expressions you would say comes from Biafran territory, showing that he knows Biafrans even more than Biafrans know themselves. Now, in Lati, we had another Amazonian who pretty much did the same thing, another powerful speaker, it seemed like speaking common language to Amazonian people. So we appreciate you guys. And with the uh alliance we are forming with Eritrea, I think we can trump our chest and say we have a powerful trio from Africa that will usher in real freedom for us. You see, when I see people talk about Nigeria getting independence in nineteen sixty, I disagree, we never got independence. Many people may disagree with me, but what I think happened was transitioning from British colonialism to full animal colonialism. In the case of Nigeria, that's what happened. So this is the time we are getting real independence where we will have the ability to control our lives without interference from anyone. Uh, in most places in the world, people own what they have. But in Biafran land, what has happened is that we don't own what we have. People from outside Biafran territory claim ownership of what the God of creation has blessed us. And those blessings that came from God, unfortunately, people from Europe who profess human rights appear head-bent in getting access to these gifts of nature through those that don't have it, but are get to themselves their ownership. And that is why the UK, the EU are supporting oppressive regimes in Africa. And even if that means killing off innocent people, they don't have any problems with that. Even if that means going to Kenya to adopt and rendition our leader down to Nigeria, they don't have any problem with it. Even if that means going to Norway to arrest and detain to arrest and detain Chou Ayaba, they don't have any problem with that. And even if that means taking in our Prime Minister, Simon Eba, for questioning a few days af- before our declaration, they don't have any problem with that. But we are here to say then that we can't be in developed countries seeing and enjoying what is possible and we turn our backs against our compatriots from our native countries, being deprived, being marginalized, and being killed at will. And I am hopeful that um, Ambazonia, Eritrea, and Biafra working together will bring freedom to our people sooner than many people expect. And I thank you all for honoring this invitation here today. Your presence is highly valued and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I invite Mr. Dazion over to you.
Good evening, good morning, and good afternoon, depending on your locations. Um, we thank God for this day. Our journey is coming to an end. But first and foremost, I'm going to say thank you to our guests that we are all having, going through the same course. God have reason for bringing us together. Because all these countries that are struggling right now, there will be a time that we are going to be leading for more African countries to start coming through. Um, EU and all these other organizations that we are waiting to come and bail us out. There will be a time that we will tell them, no, Africans have all it takes to be on their own. And this is why we are working so hard to be the first to open up the doors for those that cannot do for themselves. Because we have all it takes. I'll take it back to nineteen sixty-six to seventy, when the war was going on, our parents, our grandparents went through all this. And at the end, Nigerians, wicked Zou Nigerians, they give our grandparents twenty, twenty dollars, anaira, whatever they call it then, pounds. Go and settle your family, go and start your family. All our houses in different areas that believe that they are not part of us were taken from our parents. But what happened? Look at us today. Look at us today. We are the leaders of that nation. Nigeria know why they are running from us. They know why they want to suppress us. Because they know once we are free from this bondage, they are gone. Nevertheless, they are gone right now, but they know that nobody will hear about Nigeria anymore. So that's why they are scared. They're scared of us. They're scared of what is going on. Holding our leader will not stop us because we know it's just temporary thing. I say thank you so much to APN for all you do. I know you don't, it's not easy. All the cabinet members, thanks so much for all you people are doing. Meeting day and night to make sure that we are free, regardless that when we go up, our enemies try to pull us down. But nevertheless, we are moving and we pray that nothing will hold us. I can only tell our people listening, Biafran people, our liberation army is what we are fighting for right now. If we all come together, put our hands together, put our minds together, put our brains together to raise some fund for our liberation army, then we can accomplish anything that we put our minds and heart to. In this course, I will say thank you to Obat, um, to Butuzo, our general. I said, thank you so much for not minding what is going on. You're still pushing, regardless of the insults coming your way. But due to that, God have put you all for the time like this. You're not looking back. Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much, uh, visitors, our guests. God will make all of us and lift all of us up to get to our finish line. All hail Biafra.
All hail Biafra.
Oh, my dear. Thank you, my dear. I don't remember if you, if you introduced your portfolio.
Oh, okay, maybe I, maybe I didn't. Maybe I didn't. My name is Dr. Ruby Nadi, known as Adazian. I am the Commissioner, I'm the Minister of Education. And um, I do some other things underground too, but um, we move. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. We come to uh, COS of APN. Introduce your portfolio and I say one or two please before we move on.
Yes, uh, thank you so much, Minister of Information, Sanyabrowa. I'm Maziamobiene, uh, the COS to the Acting Prime Minister, Ogenkere, and also the Director of Materials and Logistics. Um, thank you, everyone who is here, especially our visitors. The second, the VP, uh, I don't know if you're still here of Ambazonia, the Secretary General, our President, uh, the President of Eritrea Government in Exile, President Badura. Uh, thank you for gracing this occasion. To all the ministers of the Cabinet and Biafrans who are here today, it is Biafra on the table. So as the Director of Material Logistics, I'm going to go straight because my elders have already pointed out the backstories to why we are here and why we are doing what we're doing. But there is a very important thing that I would have to point out using what our elders here have spoken on. Uh, our brother, our President, uh, the government of, uh, in exile in Eritrea, he pointed out the, the number, the importance of the number that we have. And then everybody has pointed out the fact that we are not going to back down on what we have started. So I want to encourage both Ambazonians and Biafrans all over the world to endeavor to align themselves with their liberation tax. That is where the effects of the numbers of our people is going to play part in funding our liberation. From what you've heard here today, nobody is going to come for you as an African. It is our job to make sure that we restore our land, that we defend our land from the invaders, wherever they are coming from, be it from the the jungle government in Cameroon or the terrorist government in Nigeria. It is the gov- it is the job and the, you know, the responsibility of both Biafrans and Ambazonias, civilians and military to defend our land. While those in the military wing are doing what they're doing, every civilian has to align themselves with paying their liberation tax. That is the only thing that is going to help your government be able to provide appropriate logistics for your defenses, which is the reason why everyone is talking today. When they kill you and you're not talking, everything is okay. But when they kill you and you defend yourself, then there is problem in the whole region. So you choose for yourself which side you want to stand on. Do you want to be among those who will make sure that your land is defended by making sure that you pay your liberation tax as a citizen of Ambazonia, as a citizen of Biafra? Or are you going to be among those who are going to stand against the future of your generations yet unborn? The choice is yours to make. Uh, thank you, everyone who is gathered here today. Thank you for uh gracing this wonderful event today. It is, it is from our heart that we appreciate everything that you've done and your presence here. It matters a lot to Biafrans. Thank you all. Darlo no.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Dr. Sam, are you there?
There, well, thank you.
Yes, there.
Over to you, sir.
Uh, can I get my camera on, please?
Yes, you can start your camera, start your camera. I think you have closed already.
Alright, thank you, uh, wrong, uh, Acting Prime Minister. Thank you, our guest, President of Eritrea, met you in Finland. Thank you, Secretary General. Thank you, Vice President, Dr. Julius. Thank you, all the cabinet members and administration and the reps and all the other Biafrans now tuning. I'm so happy that this is our first visit with the Acting Prime Minister since the Declaration. So I'm very happy that things are moving forward instead of backward. Everyone have said it. We just can't wait to get the administration to recognize the effort others imagine, uh, states in Africa. When we have our freedom, every country around us will benefit from the, these new countries, Biafra, Basonia, Eritrea, Somali land. What is the need of keeping us in this bondage? Is that because of the natural resources? Also, they will still get these natural resources. But at this time, they're getting it in a, a way that is much cheaper for them to, instead of pay the right, uh, price for it. I know this is difficult for everyone, especially we that are in the diaspora. It's difficult for our families, it's difficult for our families in homeland, for our families in diaspora. But we cannot give up. We cannot give up. There's no way we can give up. Um, I mean, it's written there. They can do what they can, they can jail all of us, they can take our job, they can do anything, but we cannot give up. We will try our best to do the right thing. We only asking for freedom. I mean, Mazin Nandikana is in jail because he wants freedom. Mazie Simon Eba is in jail because he want freedom. Dr. Ayaba of Arizona is in prison because of freedom. All these countries in the Western world, they all fought for freedom at that time. They were supported. Why is ours different? Is that because we're from Africa? But I believe in due time, they will come around and support our cause and let us live in free and able to make our own decision. Especially with our natural resources, how it could be used. We thank all of you. Stay strong. This is, this is just the beginning. It's gonna be hard. It's gonna be get more difficult as time goes on. But knowing the Biafra spirit is with us. Our forefathers, our fathers have died trying to get freedom, they're still with us. They're with us in spirit and they will guide us to this freedom. Thank you all.
Thank you, Minister Sam.
Thank you.
Minister Sam.
I want to introduce myself. I am
Thank you.
I am Minister of Health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Doc.
Thank you. Um, Honorable Nena, it's your turn. I meet yourself.
Thank you. Um, my name is Honorable Nena, uh, I'm the representative for Canada license. Uh, throughout the whole Canada, uh, we have some provincial, um, admins to, who supports and make things work here. I want to appreciate our APN today for this noble idea of gathering men of timber caliber, as we say it in Biafra land. I first want to appreciate our PM, Obatobi, and I know he's watching us today. I want to thank our guests today, the Secretary General of Ambazonia Governing Council, the President of Eritrea, uh, Mazie Baduru. I call him that because he's just like our brother. We thank him. And also the Vice President of Ambazonia Governing Council. Uh, we appreciate all of you for coming. Uh, this is a teamwork. This is a collaborative work. We are together with one focus, with one mission, with one vision. And there is one proverb in Hebrew, it said, when one person pee, their pee will disappear in the sand. But when many people pee together, it will form and make noise. And that is what we are doing today. Collaboration here means we exchange informations, we exchange intelligence. We give each other information that will support them in any area of their need as it comes in. And I wish we had this relationship. When the first president of Ambazonia ran to Nigeria and they extradited him. Maybe if this type of relationship existed then, he would have run to one Biafran man's house and they would be hid there for as many years as they want because nobody will report it. But they run, unfortunately, to the whole of the enemy and they were quickly rounded up. So but today, things have come to a better situation. We are happy, Ambazonians are happy. Eritreans, we are happy with you. Uh, my prayer is that this collaboration will continue in a positive move. And another great reason for today's gathering is to debunk, to debunk essentially any descending voice out there claiming or masquerading to be a representative of Biafra Republic Government in Eza or, or United States of Biafra. The only recognized representative of Simon Eba in this struggle is our honorable His Excellency Mazie Oge. He is the Acting Prime Minister of Biafra Republic Government in Eza led by Simon Eba. Any other person masquerading out there is a fake. And I don't care how many people that have beaten the false drum for them. The truth is that there is only one captain in every one ship. In the ship of Biafra, the captain is the acting Prime Minister. His Excellency Mazin Oge, the honorable. No other person and no other captain is allowed into the ship of Biafra. And I'm very, very sure and certain. That these men, these noble men that spoke here to us. We have no dealing with the black sheep. In the family of Biafra. Ngozi Orobueze is a black sheep and he should, she should be treated so. So I'm pleading to every Biafran. Who is still believing that the lies Ngozi is telling you. Will lead you to anywhere, is going to lead you to nowhere. You people have been saying, oh, when APM comes out, APM doesn't need to come out. To tell you where he belongs and he has declared it open. Therefore, it is up to you now to withdraw yourself honorably and fall back. To the original Biafra government in Eza led by His Excellency. Honorable Oge Nkere. Any other team short of it. You are shooting yourself on your leg. And it is important for you to take that decision right now. Our PM has spoken to some people specifically, gave them the honor, called them by their names. Those men and women, you know yourself. We will accept you back, you will come, you are one family. Leave Ngozi alone. She is having what Shakespeare calls a vaulting ambition. And in the history of mankind, the only women that have vaulting ambition. They end up destroying themselves. We know about Jezebel. In the book of, um, in one of the books of Shakespeare, we know about Lady Macbeth. So a woman that have this type of vaulting ambition is heading to destruction. And please, may you never be part of Ngozi's destruction because she will destroy herself. There is no doubt for it. So I thank you everybody today for this great gathering of men. Of timber and caliber, men of integrity, men of honesty that have gathered this evening. To make things work. And I thank you all, all my members of her cabinets. Um, Professor Chuma, uh Dr. Bryson, all of us, Dr. Um. Ruby and every other person, Dr. Sam. All my media warriors, thank you all for making this occasion today to happen. This is a milestone in our struggle and today will never be forgotten. Thank you all and God bless you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Please, every speaker should be guarded of time. Too many because we have to go back to the program, we have a lot on the program. Uh, European Rep, over to you. And after European Rep. Um, who else do I see there? Some of the cabinet members, they are not on camera, so I can't spot them. So please, um, in the course of events, when I see you, you pick the mic. Only seeing those that are on camera now. European Rep, over to you.
Thank you, Honorable Sunny. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, Biafrans. Our delegates from Ambazonia, Eritrea. Thank you for joining us today. It is profound. I'm just gonna make it very quick because all my colleagues, they have said a lot of things here. And I, I agree with them. And first of all, I wanna thank our PM and our leader Mazin Nandikana. Our APM. Our media team. Our defense forces. All my colleagues. All the government officials, Biafrans all over the world. With profound respect and solidarity, I welcome you all to this gathering of hearts. United by shared struggles and a common thirst for freedom. Thank you, the Ambazonia delegates. The Eritrean President. Today, we are not, we are, we are more than just individuals from different lands. We are brothers and sisters bound by the scars of oppression. And the unyielding hope of liberation. From the hills of Ambazonia, the resilience of Eritrea. To the unwavering spirit of Biafra, we stand as a testament to the indomitable will of our people. This moment just reminds us that our pain is not isolated. It echoes across borders. Uniting us in a shared journey towards justice. dignity and self-determination. Together, we are stronger, louder and more resolute in our pursuit of the freedom of our people. I want this gathering. To ignite a rule, a renewed sense of purpose in our fight. Let it also remind us that though the road is long. Our collective courage and unity will light the way to a brighter, freer future. Thank you for your presence today, your sacrifice, your unwavering commitment. May this gathering today strengthen the bonds that we all had already. And bind us and bring us closer to the freedom we all deserve. To my Biafran people. I just ask God to give you more wisdom to differentiate the truth from the lies. To stand strong. Even in the more difficult times like this. I just beg you all to be strong especially. And to keep fighting, not holding on, not waiting, keep fighting. Because as long as our freedom has not been completely gotten, our fight is not over. So please, whatever you do, keep doing it. Thank you all and I appreciate everyone that are present here today. I forgot to, I forgot to, of course, to introduce myself, uh, uh, um. Yeah, I'm the European Representative and the Deputy Interna, uh, Minister of Internal Affairs. Thank you so much and thank you for joining us today. God bless you all. God bless Ambazonia, God bless Eritrea and God bless Biafra. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We have to release our guest because uh. They've been in several meetings and they will be joining other meetings as well. So Honorable Oke, over to you. So that we can release our guest, so that we go back to our programs because we have a lot. Please, any member of cabinet that has not spoken, as we continue the program, you will have the time to speak. Please don't be a pet nurse. Honorable Oke, over to you.
Uh, thank you very much, Honorable, uh, Arawa. A special thanks to our leader, our Prime Minister, acting PM. Honorable Ministers, the Biafra Regional Government exile. Rebs, the facto government in homeland. And distinguished Biafrans, you are welcome today. And I'll use this opportunity to thank our special guests in the house. The President of Eritrea, the Vice P of Ambazonia and his cabinets. You are highly welcomed today. Uh, it's the first meeting of such, of such kind. And I must commend. Our APM for organizing this uh Julian meeting. It's a historic one and I will also acknowledge, we found a bond. Though the bond have been existing, but we've found it, we finally come together to fight this cause together. As one body, as one unit. As we are today, I don't think that anybody, any force. Will ever separate us from reaching our ends, from attending our goals, our common goals, which is freeing our people. What we do, many may not understand. Freedom, seeking for the freedom of our people. That is not even our personal benefits that we are fighting for, but for the freedom of our people. It's very, very peculiar and it is philanthropic in nature, though we may not know it. We are seeking to free the generation yet unborn. That are coming after us. That makes it honorable and very humble. I thank you all. Who is in this line to free those that does not even. Or are not even part of us personally. Thank you all and thank you, Biafrans. Please, this union, I'm begging us. We are going to unify it more, make it more stronger. Because in diversity, we are going to achieve this end. We are going to achieve it. The Ambazonian, the Biafrans, history keeps relating to us that we have common interests. We are one, maybe separated by just the, uh, uh, our common enemies, which are the Europeans. So but as a long run, we may also find out the things that hold us uh more unified. So thank you and you are all highly welcome. I would say this is a bond that has been rekindled and we are going to make it uh stronger. So I am Honorable Oke. I serve in the Departments of Communication as well, as the head of Postal Services. Biafra Postal Services. And the Secretary of the Tourism and Culture Department. So uh maybe when we achieve this end, there are so many grounds that we will. Find ourselves to work together and achieving. So you are welcome and we hope and look forward to meeting us uh soonest to fortify this union. Thank you and you are welcome.
Thank you, Honorable. There was.
Thank you.
Yeah, APM, uh, I made Oke to be the. A large member of cabinet to speak while others will speak later since we have to release our guests. So that they can go and attend to other matters. So other members of cabinet could continue speaking as the program continues. So because of time. You can release the President of Eritrea so that we continue with the program. And every other person can continue speaking later on. APM, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, uh. President of Eritrea, my good friend. Bandarai, I know you have a busy schedule today, so. Right after your engagement, uh, Biafran people. We appreciate, we really appreciate that you're still able to make it. So from the Biafra Republic Government in Eza and Biafrans at large. We are glad to say thank you. We appreciate you and. We'll see again and very soon we'll be going to Washington DC. We have some assignment on finished business. I think. Every week. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Uh, pretty soon our job will continue. Uh, we have a lot to do together. I'm very proud to be part of this for that sake. Uh, I'm very thankful to be a friend of Biafra, Ambazonian. Uh, so we'll continue doing what we're doing, but I am very, very, very. Uh, regardless of the tightness of the schedule. I'm glad you made me to participate here, so I'm very proud and I wish you the best for all of you. And we'll meet again. So thankful, thank you a lot.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and your time.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, we come back to our program and we continue on our mandate. Um. Our Rep, Honorable Lemelike. Back to you. Before then, we have two hands up, maybe they want to make donations. Of ekola, let me pick them before I give you back the mic. Uh, Epan Joku, over to you. Epan Joku, or meet yourself.
Alright, um, good evening, everyone. Greetings, uh, Honorable, um, Acting Prime Minister. Honorable Nkere. Greetings to you, my Honorable Minister of Information. About, uh, Parawastani. Uh, my greats every honorary members, um, here present and all the de facto, um. Um, reps, here present. My name is Ufon Esten. And the administrator for Akakwala State. I just during a meeting right now and feel like I should make a little contribution. Uh, I know a lot of us and so many of us back in the homeland are still confused about what is going on. But those who are smart, those who are intelligent enough, those who have common sense, have been able to decode. You know, the style of the enemies. All I want to tell anyone right, everyone right now, to just keep staying strong. You know, keep standing on the template laid down by our Prime Minister. And follow the Biafra Republic Government Eza. Now led by our honorable, um, Acting Prime Minister, Oke Nkere. And do not relent on your effort like our, you know, European reps spoke said earlier. That this is not an easy task, you know. So far, we've not gotten our independent who keep having this kind of, you know, destruction here and there. The enemies are not relenting. So and such, we will not continue, we're not, we're not gonna relent, continuing to fight until the end of the day. Remember what our leader said at the coming of Biafra, it's gonna be the last miracle on head. We don't know what the enemies are planning for us after this. But whatsoever they are bringing, trust me, you're all gonna make sure we overcome this. And I want to tell everyone again, what Ngozi is doing right now, what Madame Ngozi is doing right now. The major aim of what she is doing is to defund the Biafra event force. I'm telling you, because once you bring the destruction into the family like this. When it comes to the time for the nation to support the men on ground, a whole lot of persons are confused. And everyone can attest to the fact that since she brought the destruction, so many in the house have been divided. And the money will have been donated to go straight and support the men on ground is being divided. We don't know where the rest of them is going to. And by the time, remember what Musa say, Musa say if he stop funding us, that trust me, the struggle is gonna be destroyed. And that's exactly what she's trying to do. So by the time the money runs out and the men on ground are not getting support as they used to get. Some of them might probably compromise or some of them might probably give up and all. And if you can get our men on ground, trust me, whatsoever we are doing right now is bullshit. So that's the extent of what she's doing. But we in Akakwala State, I'm still happy for my executive in Akakwala State. And the people of Akakwala State who are so smart and intelligent enough. And we've come out to rebuke her and we resist her in our own state. Uh, whoever she's using to cause distraction and to slow down the Biafa restoration project in Akakwala State. That person will have the guts of our land and our ancestors to deal with. Because most of you, most of them do not know that we do not come into this struggle on our own. We're choosing, we got the revelation, they sent us to come here, you know, the evidence are there. And one of our old strong man, one of our son is in the battlefield, in person of Holy Ghost. So everybody knows this Ngozi cannot come to Akakwala State and try to bring destruction to scratch what we have been doing a long time ago. So please, I will encourage everyone to keep staying strong. Uh, we in Akakwala State, we are not deviating. We are still standing on the mandate, on the template laid down by our Prime Minister, which has never caused any problem for any of us. And again, I want to equally call on the Biafra Republic Government Eza Cabinet and our APM. To do something about the, 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 the reps in the homeland. You know, with what is going on. You know, with what is going on, I have every, I want to believe that our numbers are compromised. Because Madame Ngozi is busy calling most of our names, writing our name up there on Twitter, I mean on X. And the names are compromised, the number, she has most of our details. Because she was the chief of staff, so most time when we have meeting, we believe she has the number. We don't know what she's planning to do, but our vice that would divide means. That the, the, some of us in the homeland can be protected in some way, because I believe that our numbers, our digit have been highly compromised. By this woman. And the first time I noticed that she was up to something was each time we had meeting with our prime minister and she's there coordinating the meeting. Most time when some of us want to speak, especially when PM is not yet on the Zoom meeting. She will say, if you want to speak on your camera, on your camera. She will command you to on your camera, I knew this man was up to something, but when PM comes on the Zoom meeting, she will change her mind. She won't order anyone to on the camera. I don't know the extent of that, I don't know what she was trying to do. But we are in the homeland, you're over there, so we had greater risks. That's why most of us are always very careful, whatsoever we are doing. But despite that, we are not scared, we are not afraid, because we sign off for this. And we'll continue to make sure we get to the promised land. Thank you very much for giving me opportunity and my APM, God bless you for standing on the path of truth. My brother and my honorable Parawa Stoney, I have more respect, you are respected so much. God continue to bless and guide you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, after Ngozi started a madness, I did release a flyer, which I said. Every de facto administrator should change their phone numbers. That was immediately after Ngozi was calling your names on the town hall meeting. On fundraising. And when she confessed that she's communicating with the zoo governors. I released a flyer and I said, every homeland de facto, change your phone numbers. That flyer is still there, I can still go and pick that tweet and retweet it again. So for those that did not hear, it is time you listen now. Change the phone numbers that you know you were using when Ngozi was reachable to you. So change those phone numbers, uh huh, there a new phone number. Change everything on your WhatsApp or Telegram and then rejoin again and don't be using WhatsApp for anything Biafra. We've said it before, stay on Telegram only. Thank you so much. Uh, Edé Uchenna. Edé Uchenna, unmute yourself. Edé, go ahead, over to you.
Yeah, good evening.
Deo.
Can, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I wanna use this opportunity and it's time to thank everybody that are standing fast for Biafra. Uh, I thank our brothers. But that from Eritrea, Ambazonia. And Biafrans that, that, that welcome this occasion. I thank everybody, it's not easy. All our plight is that we got out from the contraption of annihilation. It's something from Eritrea and there's something I want to say. In those days where we are, we are, we are being told history that Ethiopia was the only country in Africa that was not colonized. But the way it took us to get to Eritrea, I don't even know, and I believe Eritreans are dominantly Christians. Because anyway, Christians, Christians, they will be treated like they're, they're less citizens, they're less human beings. Something in Ambazonia, who is our brothers and kings and kings. So I want to say that we should continue. What the differences that Biafrans are passing through today. The Ambazonians have faced such a thing before and they have passed through it and came as stronger. Then 2014, 2015. There was this, their, their general, uh, Iveta Punk, which was their spokesman then. Since we are going where, when they arrested, when the, um. President Julius Ayukta was arrested in Nigeria and the mission back to Cameroon. All this thing happened, they started the fight, Cameroonian started by you know, their brothers, who are in need, they have. I remember Ebenezer Akuanga, when he came to Enugu, all of us we met. He was the first person that started the liberation of, uh, Ambazonia by defending their self. Based on the alliance we had with them then. Before ADF, Ambazonian Defense Force emerged, led by Dr. Chu Ayaba. So what are these things, but it's quite unfortunate that as time goes on, within them, they start forming gangs. They are military strength, fighting against their own military. With, with the help of Eric Tato and Capodanno, all of them, they gang up against Chu Ayaba. But thank God that Chu Ayaba later, with his perseverance and steadfastness, he overcame. Now, Ambazonia Governing Council and ADF is the first runner of Ambazonian Defense Forces and this governing council being recognized all over. So I want to use that same, this thing to encourage our people, one bridge for us to stay first. Our own have not reached the time or the type of, and what they pass through, at least. We have not started killing ourselves and I believe we are not going to kill ourselves. Ngozi is basically just making propaganda, may trying to woo some people to his own side, to start recruiting or. But thank God for Sonia Badawara Passavam and our able APM, Ogen Kere. For them standing fast and raising the alarm on time. Then we, people with good conscience, see what is happening, started shouting. We thank God for everybody that are contributing, shouting, shouting on that, to see what is happening. And the many, many people started opening their eyes and see what is happening. I believe at this stage, we must overcome. The only thing is that, thank God that our, uh, force that intact, they have not. Shouting on themselves, like in Ambazonia. So the only thing we do is we try our best, try to fund them. With PM or no PM, whether we are on the card or not on the card, all of us are Biafrans. There was a belief, if the human in the, on the way, and the sun will rise with double spirit of. When they got our, 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 they thought the road had closed. But I can't tell if it was on that, on that road.
Your voice is cracking. Yeah, we can't hear you.
Thank you for your submission, thank you for your submission, Edé, thank you, thank you, we have to continue. Thank you, um. Chini Akku, over to you for your update.
Um, actually my network failed me, if you can help me, um, turn on my camera. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Honorable Lemelika, over to you, let's go back to the program, please, I said.
Uh, pardon me for that. Uh, are we going to make any adjustments, um? Because.
Just go, go straight to your speech. Go straight to your speech.
My welcome address?
Yeah.
Okay, uh. Once again, I greet Biafrans and all protocols observed. And especially, uh, I, I. Like to remember our leaders that are now being held. Uh, Prime Minister, uh, we. I pray especially that he will. Get all the help he needs and that he will remain strong. I also pray that Marzi Nandekano. Will remains spiritually and physically and mentally strong. You see, uh, this is. The time that both, uh, leaders, especially, uh, Marzi Nandekano. Has brought to our attention a time where we need to go inside our mind. And begin to do some serious evaluation on, on, on exactly what the enemy is trying to do. Uh, you see, we have resisted the enemy. And they now found out, yes, we cannot beat these people physically. Uh. So the next thing is to try to beat us psychologically. And I also want to bring to the attention of Biafrans that, uh, so. As far as psychological warfare is concerned, we need to be strengthened. In, in that area as well, it's not everything we hear. That we're all fret about. If you hear it, the issue is where are you hearing it? Or who is here, who are you hearing it from? And so. Uh, we need to understand that in this, in a struggle like this, there's going to be ups and downs. And the focus will always, should always be. Our goal. Now, um, for those of us who are abroad or who are in a diaspora. You know, we, we. We do everything that we can. We do when we can. And we do it in any, anywhere we can. But those choices are not available to those, you know, those of them that are back in hometown, you know, I mean in the homeland. And so, as we go by our daily, uh, activities. Uh, let us remember. That a lot of people are counting on us. Even the ones that have been deceived. Uh, they know what, what is right. And they know that we are not backing down. When our leaders tell us that we have crossed the Rubicon. That's exactly what it is, we have crossed the Rubicon and there's no time to, you know, cry over spilled milk. Uh, we just have to march on. And I will encourage each and every one of us. That. As these struggles continue. You know, it's never going to be like it used to be. We will do things differently. Let us continue to support, uh, APM, the cabinet members in anywhere we can, to do things differently. Because, uh, there's a popular adage in, in our homeland is that it goes like this. If the bird learns to fly without perchance. Then we're gonna have to learn to shoot. The bird without aiming. Uh, I would encourage each and every one of us who is here to know that. The cause that brought us here is. Something that is worthwhile. The reward will be great. I have not seen. Any gains made without pain. You know, for those of us who are used to working out, you know, you will be reminded as a no pain, no gain. So this one will be painful. And I'd just like to say, whatever you do each day, uh, praying. For our leaders. Because that prayer goes a long way. And I look forward. To working with. Everyone. In any capacity that I can be of assistance to you, please. Do not hesitate to reach out to me. Again, I thank you all. Every one of them, every, every one of us that is visiting from around the world or Biafrans worldwide. I thank everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Rep, Honorable Lemelika, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Please.
At this point, you will now have to jump to item number eleven.
Okay.
Item eleven.
Alright, uh, this. The next item will be, uh, Marilyn Brigi, uh, presenting a gift to PM, uh, APM. And, um, Admin, Madame Nonya. Over to you. Madame Nonya. Are you there?
Yeah, she's there.
Okay.
Honorable Nonya, over to you.
Alright. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
Hello?
We can hear you loud and clear, we can hear you, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, good afternoon, Biafrans all over the world. Um, first I would like to acknowledge our leaders. General Odjuku, General Philip, APM, Marzi Namnikan, Marzi Simon Epa. As well as Active Prime Minister Marzi Ogen Kere. Um, uh, I will say Biafrans will forever be grateful for the work you've done for the freedom and liberation of Biafra. Uh, to all the honorable ministers, with special thanks to CRC PM Marze Madagom. Uh, Professor Chioma, Dr. Ruby, Dr. Joy, Dr. Bryson, Dr. Comfort. Um, Honorable Obi, Honorable Anobi, Honorable Lemelika and everybody else. Uh, if I don't call your name, please forgive me. I just wanna thank all of you for standing tall and sticking true to power. Uh, thank you for making sure that the template that our PM Marzi Simon Epa put in place did not crumble. I really appreciate that. That was a wonderful thing. Uh, to the media team, Honorable Aparawa, Honorable Ajay Erich, Honorable Omo Bito, Honorable Betty. Biafrans appreciate your own relenting coverage and continuous debunking of lies against, uh, Brigi. Um, so my gift presentation actually is for. This is more like a reminder, you all know that green means, uh, uh, our land, right? Uh, and the presentation is not, is not for anybody actually. Uh, there is a plant called Poros, uh, which is also known as Epipremnum aurium. And this plant, uh, symbolizes good fortune, wealth and resilience. And it represents perseverance, strength. strength, positivity. And it can adapt to different conditions. Just a little bit of nurturing is all you need. Just like our motherland, Biafra, we need to nurture her, protect her, adore her, be good citizens, be proud of her, serve her, and we can achieve all these ideals by being brave, consistent, caring, and truthful. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have?
Make sure we get this gift to Biafra and what we need to do.
Okay. The floor is open for donations and updates, please.
Make sure we give.
Yes.
We have just few minutes to be here because we had guests and others took or chopped much of our time and it was worth it. So we appreciate everything. So on that note, we've made some changes to our programs and we crave your indulgence to understand with us because you all have work to do. So we don't want you to overstay longer than expected. So please bear with us. Please, the floor is open for just five minutes. If there are some updates, you can bring it up. Bring it up and then giving your support. And in the absence of none, we will be drawing the curtain in the next couple of minutes. Okay, I can see two hands. All right, Honorable K, over to you.
Yes, thank you very much once again. Please, I may not be making an instant donation now, but I just want to make a nice announcement. Please, Bia France, we have a good news. Maybe we had hoped that today we will make this announcement to yield us some good results for Biafra. And the good news is that we have, we are able to win back the Biafra shop, which was initially in the other camp. But I got the information level one that we are able to, that is now in our position. So on that note, I want to make an offer that in that regard, we want to put that back to action. We want to reinvigorate the activities in our Biafra shop and put some offers for Biafra to be able to obtain or order. Like from the last convention, we had some stops that were under high demand and likable too. So we want to create an avenue so that Biafra can get hold of these items if need be, or maybe to circulate it wider and make some little gems to the government. Such is, we all know our cap is highly loved and recommendable. We also have the badge. This badge and this one, we want to produce it for a greater outreach for Biafra. So we want to organize this place. If you are reps in various countries or liaisons, you can place an order. We cannot produce this in a minimal quantities. You have to be ordered through liaisons. So if you can order such things as this, you can place an order and distribute to your various countries. We want to put it out so that such things as this, and then our caps will be widely circulated and in such a way see how much we can generate for the government. We also want to produce this. That is the coat of arm. We want to produce this to be a kind of a sticker. We make it, if I produce, you can be placing it on your cars, like there's a car stickers, and that is still under production. So things like this will be soon available in the Biafra shops. So that is good to know if you are a rep, admin, and need these items to be produced, you just reach out to me or Professor Chioma so that we arrange how you get them supplied to you. Thank you.
Honorable K, please, while you were showing the thing, it didn't come out well. So pick the two pins and have them in your two palms like this so that it can be well seen. Uh huh. All right. So just hold on for some seconds so that Biafra can see it properly.
So that is our famous emblem on the last Lattic Convention.
Okay, thank you. Show us the other one, the sticker again.
Okay, that is also the coat of arm.
Okay.
So this one, if I produce, is kind of a car stickers. You can be placing it on your cars. So that is a car stickers, just like a normal stickers, or you can also hand it in your homes as you may wish. So admins can organize as many as possible. We only supply to admin because of the postage cost, because we cannot be posting one item. It costs more international deliveries. It's only made possible through DHL and their cost is high, so it must be on a quantity demand. So that is why it must be organized through liaison offices. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We come to mighty dot.
Please, one correction there. For people that need the items, it is to contact Honorable K or Honorable Emeka Aravu, the Biafra shop director, not me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Secretary General. Thank you so much. Honorable Mighty Dot, over to you.
Yes, before we make on.
Ekondo.
Yeah, I know we are, we are time constrained right now, but greetings to my acting PM. Greetings to all the cabinet members that present greetings Bia France in general, all the admins and reps. I just, I wanted to say one thing, you know, like through observation, I've said this thing before. Like, can we just like try as much as possible to make this woman irrelevant? Because I've said that we have been the bloodline, the lifeline of this woman. If we just ignore and pretend that she, because all these people that are all around her, Mazin Nandikano preach, Mazze Simon Epa preach, I mean, there's no any other preaching that this people, that will save this people. Anybody that is meant for destruction is going to be facing destruction. So there is nothing preaching or whatever, talking on space, talking here and everywhere. I mean, even we're making this woman so relevant that a woman is terrorizing men in back home. She has family, she has home, she has where she comes from. And we are allowing her to have such power and make her such irrelevant, relevance. We need to make her irrelevant by just moving forward with what we have so many things ahead that we need to do. We just focus on that and don't even pretend as if she doesn't even exist. I'm telling you, this woman will fizzle out. We are the one giving her this lifeline, making her relevant. Please, let's act on that. Yeah, thank you. And also, please, I am getting pissed off so much that this humiliation is too much. If we are worried about what countries or people, we ask that country, if such a thing is happening in your land, what will you do? If your country was such a situation in the past, how did they do? What did they do? So what did they expect us? Or is it because they see us as brax? That we don't have the rights that they have, even though we are gods here on this planet Earth? So please, we need to take action. We need to make a heavy noise that this people will know that they are holding Mazze Simon Epa, holding our leader, is not going to deter us at all. In fact, it's even going to infuriate us even more. We need, I have been saying, we need to make a heavy sound. They are holding Mazin Nandikano, Mazze Simon Epa right now, the European Union and this. Why? Nigeria is holding a leader. Why? Is it because of our natural resources? Let's do something about that natural resources that they are doing this thing, so that they will know that we are not joking. I just, today I want to support the listener, the town hall meeting, 50 gemma for the breaking of Colanot and 100 gemma for the visit. And thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
If we support what Mighty Dot say by making noise, we know what he meant by that. So kindly raise up your hand and make your noise on how you can support the freedom of your people. Please, when we, if you want to say something, kindly move yourself. We need to make noise. The noise we need to make is to support our freedom. The noise we need to make is for you to do your best. Freedom is not giving, it's taking. Even in the terrorist country, their so-called president, the drug lord, the drug dealer Tunabu, during the Zou election, Tunabu proudly asked his supporters, grab the vote, snatch the ballot votes. If you believe in Biafra, you believe in your freedom. Grab it. It's your freedom. Take your freedom. No one will give you your freedom. Our freedom is in our hands. That's why what our brother Mighty Dot just said, we need to apply that. We need to do what we haven't done before. We are not terrorists. We are not saying we go out there and terrorize anyone. We are going to help ourselves. Use what we have. Use our resources, whatever we can use to support our freedom. Is the good thing. Our freedom is worth fighting for. Former President Barack Obama said the unity of this whole country, Nigeria, is not negotiable. Biafra freedom is not negotiable. Where Biafra will be the one to decide. If we want to remain slaves, if we want to be slaves to the Nigerian state or we will grab and take our freedom. Please, if you haven't supported your freedom, I encourage you is the right thing to do. Biafra is our house. Biafra is our land. Just like in your own house, where you shut your door and sleep at night. You want to be asleep and be peaceful. You don't want no criminal thief to break, come in and steal, kill you or rob you. So what do you do in a case like that? You protect yourself. Why do you have doors unlocked to lock your door? So that no one will come and kill you, rob you. Biafra land is our house. We need, we have our doors and we need to lock that door. And we need to be prepared. If you in your house, there's a lot of things you have in your house you can use to defend yourself. In our house, which is Biafra, we need to defend our house, which is Biafra. Serve the first is not a crime. Thank you, fellow Biafras. Let's do the needful and make sure we lock our house and safeguard our house, safeguard our property, everything inside the house is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, APM. Honorable Major. Honorable Major, thanks just a bit.
Yes, well, I just want to use opportunity to encourage our people that are listening. That it's time to step up and do the needful. What I keep hearing from some of our members is that I'm not going to do anything. I'll just wait for a PM to come out and tell me who is right or who is wrong. But while you're waiting, they're killing your people. If South Africa have waited, they have waited. If they have waited for Nelson Mandela to come out, they have waited for 27 years. But their fight against apartheid became more fierce when Mandela was arrested. So we need to step up and do the needful. We are 18 million strong. If they arrest one leader, another one will emerge and they will get tired of arresting. So on that note, I just want to give a quick update from Texas. I have one donation from my father. He donated 100 for APM visit and 50 for Colanot. So that brings Texas to 1,120. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. I will say it again, if you're from the homeland and you've been part of the defacto administration, you've had contact with Ngozi before now. I did make an announcement immediately after the convention and said, change your phone numbers that were connected to Ngozi. Not just change your phone numbers. It is only Telegram that has been sanctioned by the Prime Minister for this day-to-day running of events of Biafra government in exile and in fact in the homeland. Prime Minister sanctioned that and said, all of you move out from WhatsApp because WhatsApp has been infiltrated. But Madame Ngozi, in her own way, decided to continue to keep the WhatsApp groups, even when Prime Minister said every WhatsApp group for Biafra government should be scrapped. So for your own security, vacate all the WhatsApp groups. Lent only the Telegram group that is officiated by the government of BRGIE. Where you see the APM there, you see the CRC Minister there. You could see me there as well, and many of the cabinet ministers. Change the phone numbers that you had connections with Ngozi. Get a new one. And also, the phone number that you are going to use on your Telegram should not be the same phone number that gives you direct connection into that phone. Use a different SIM card for that phone. The number that you're going to register for that Telegram should be a different number. I repeat what I said. The SIM card that is inside the phone that will give you access to internet should be a different number. The number that is registered for that Telegram should be a different number. It should not be that same number for the SIM card that is inside the Telegram. These are for your security reasons. Do so because we don't want to lose any of you. We want all of you to be alive, to see Biafra fully liberated so that you can enjoy the freedom which you have fought and sacrificed for years. I salute all of you. Five more minutes and then we round it up. If there are more hands or if there is none, we salute everyone that have made it here. Okay, Anurika, over to you.
Yeah, good evening all again, or good morning. I have an update. Mazze. Mazi, Benjamin from Ezani State. He, he picked the cola with two thousand AJ. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Ayodzuku Ashebo, your hat is up, over to you.
Okay. Okay. Um, my video on, please?
Of course, you know, one, ten thousand.
Yeah, add to your video, add to your video.
Okay. Yes. Thank you Biafrans. Thank you all cabinet members. I just have a quick message for Biafrans. My fellow Biafrans, the message I have for you people today is the, the invitation to Capitol Hill by our APM. That thing you call disgrace is the Biafra we are looking for. Like I said, I'm lucky to be a student of Radio, a student of Radio Biafra during the professorship of Mazi Nandikan. He is my prophet. And I always receive a message from my prophet. So no matter what you think, remember our leader Mazi Nandikan said, Biafra is the last miracle on earth. That is why you see what is happening. Everything that is, is, is still happening around our struggle is to make sure when the Biafra come, you will appreciate Chukokika Biamma. That visitation to Capitol Hill White House, Washington DC by our APM is the Biafra we are looking for. It's not about jealousness, it's not about envy. Yes, our leader Mazi Nandikan, that is what he has been dreamed of. Even our PM, that is his wish. But unfortunately, they are not here to attend that visitation. It happens to be our APM, Ogenkere. It's not about jealous, it's not about envy. If you truly want your freedom, you have to listen to what Ogenkere is saying. It is a mission destined by Chukokika Biamma. My APM, I really appreciate you and I like your dancing step today. It's not about envy, it's all about jealous. If you, if you believe in Biafra, you must listen to our acting Prime Minister, who is representing our Prime Minister Mazi Simon Joko. I'm gonna support your dancing step today with hundred a gemma. Thank you, my APM. Keep moving, don't look back, like I said. The time we are now is the time of mental toughness. Everyone must remember, it's time of mental toughness. The Biafra is here and who is gonna give us this Biafra is that man you know. Remember how we fought during the Biden administration, during the election of Biden? We all know, remember when Donald Trump won the election first time, how they massacred us in Port Harcourt? I can tell you that visitation you guys are calling disgrace, Donald Trump have seen that video. I can tell, I can tell you with whole heart, I'm not joking. It's a, it's a prophecy, you can write today's day down. Thank you Biafrans, we move.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So that will be two hundred for today, right?
Yes, two hundred. On behalf of Australia and the, and the fifty thousand AJ for, for, um, my state, Odumbe State.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mazi.
Thank you all.
Our mommy, sorry, our mommy, Anene, it looks like she's raising her hand.
Mama Anene, oh, sorry, Mama Anene, we did not see your gestures. Uh huh.
Amen, amen. Sunny. Have all protocol observed.
Yes.
I, myself and my brother Albert from Texas, we are giving hundred, hundred a gemma, please.
Thank you.
To support the, today's program. I am with two people, I mean prayer. The Lord answer our prayer.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Lamobi, over to you. Uh, Mama Anene, forgive us, we did not see you all this far. We, we wouldn't have kept a, a great veteran like you waiting.
Okay, thank you, God bless you. Thank you.
Honorable Lamobi, over to you.
Yes, sir, I say more, eh, in case, in case Donald Trump, I know, APM, now look for this event, continue fifty a gemma, Anene, we can. I don't know.
Thank you, Minister Snow.
Thank you. You brought snow to Houston the other day.
Even in New Orleans, after fifteen years.
I was, the last time we had three inches of snow in Houston was, the last time was nineteen sixty. Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too, because, uh,
And Atlanta followed us, we were like, how does Texas answer snow, then snow came?
Right. So, thank you.
Honorable Sunny, how many more hours do we have?
Hehe, APM, we're rounding up.
Two or three, are you sure? It's like, uh, we don't want to leave yet.
That's like yesterday.
We are leaving. We are almost at the last, the very last.
Yeah, we are leaving, we are leaving.
Okay, uh, Honorable Sunny, what, are you, uh, should I go ahead and call on the last one, the last item? Honorable Brown?
I don't know if you're still here.
Yes, 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 I'm, I'm here. Please, we round up, we round up, um. Uh, Honorable Ebenezer, please give your closing remarks.
Okay, um, I want to thank every Biafran that has supported this, um, town hall meeting. And of course, we, we were delighted to see, uh, the Ambazonia representatives and, uh, the President of Eritrea, uh, uh, government in exile. And also, I, I thank APM for just leading us for all his efforts. And I, I, I also thank, uh, those who are watching, but I will also encourage them to just make the next move. Uh, just start to do your part. Because the, what we are looking for is not just for one person. Uh, start little, and when you are impressed, you can even do more. But I, I promise you that Biafra is the, the heaven on earth we are talking about. You know, a lot of us think that heaven is in the sky. No. The heaven on earth is this Biafra we are talking about. And so, start now to support. And if you are not sure whether you're doing the right thing or not, I, I, I ask you to just have that faith that you have never, never been in a position where you can say, this is mine. Make this yours. I, 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 I know that anything you make yours, you take a little bit more care of it and you make, you know, you, you a little bit more serious with it. So Biafra will be good to all of us. In fact, Biafra will be great for all of us. So please, uh, come on board. Forget about all these, uh, little gossips going around here and there. Uh, you, the, the Biafra we are looking for is not where we're gonna be destroying ourselves. In fact, we are going to embrace ourselves. We are gonna be proud of ourselves. This is the only black nation that will be fully free on the face of the earth. Fully free. So join us. And thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable. We, we have two hands there, Minister Comfort and Honorable Yunis. Minister Comfort, over to you. You can start your camera, Minister Comfort. Minister Comfort, over to you, you can start your camera, please.
I thank everyone, everyone actually, for coming. And I thank, I thank those, um, the people who hosted us today. May God bless you. I thank, I thank everyone of you, especially our, our Madike and our Prime Minister Samon Epa. And I thank our guests who came today. Uh, the Ambazonians and Eritrean, Eritreans. Um, our acting, uh, Prime Minister Nkere. I thank you so much for your resilience and resul- resoluteness. I pray for God to grant you more wisdom in whatever you do. Today I'm supporting them with a fifty a gemma, fifty, um, euro. And I pray that every one of us, she just key in the most important thing. It's a donation, 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 donation. That is very important. And this particular visit that our acting PM is doing is very, very important. And I pray that you to be consistent. And I thank God for our media warriors. I pray for God to, to really, really, really support you and for God to grant you that wisdom, you know, acumen and stability in all you do. And I thank every minister that is here represented, especially our Brigi, our Brigi. Uh, it hasn't been very easy, but the law will make it easy for us because we already in Biafra. All these refraus, you know, we, we just don't want to give them the cred-, uh, the, uh, acknowledgement because, uh, the more we talk about them, the more they, you know, they are proud of themselves. Because in no distant time, they will give up. In my, the devil comes just to steal, kill and destroy. But Jesus Christ has come to give us that support we need. Thank you everybody for coming. Thank you for staying so late. God bless everyone of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Yunis, over to you.
Thank you.
Honorable Yunis, over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the mic, Amara Sunny. I want to, you know, um, stand on existing protocols because I know that, um, is the end of the program. Yeah, I want to, I appreciate our team Prime Minister, Mazi Ogenkere. I just want to thank you for making us proud. At Capitol Hills, I want to thank you for standing your ground, pushing Biafra to the world, even though our enemies, they were trying to mock us, but God put them to shame. Their mother was nowhere to be found near that arena. And she was just jumping around one street that has no name with Armenians, trying to prove otherwise, and she was put to shame. You saw the picture that came out of that. She looked like a lizard, a gamma lizard. That was what she looked like. Thank you, Mazi Ogenkere. You made us proud. God bless you. We appreciate you. We love you so much and keep on doing your good work. And want to thank all our Ambazonian brethren and, uh, Eritrean government, government in exile President Bandura. God bless you, sir, and keep on keeping on. Thank you. I would not be left out in this blessing. I would, uh, support with hundred dollars. Thank you all our USA, um, brethren. We appreciate you. Have a fruitful, fruitful week.
Thank you so much, Yanis.
Thank you, Yanis.
No, I'll come, have a blessed week to you.
Ayodzuku Ma, Ayodzuku Ma, on your Chuku. Ayodzuku Ma, on your Chuku, unmute yourself, over to you, make it snappy, please.
Ayodzuku Ma. They will, I greet everybody, um, honorable ministers, um, all reps, um, my not a South American rep, I greet you. I greet the APM. Um, I just want to say, um, I've been so occupied by, I've been watching and everything that is going on. And I will not be left out without having to say something before this end. So I want to thank each and every one of us for what we are doing. It's not an easy journey, but trust me, we're gonna get through because the one above all things is with us. Um, also, I wanna tell our APM, if you continue to do the good work, what he's doing is that which those on the right path want him to do. If you continue to go out there representing, uh, we are gonna support him with everything that I need. Also, I want to call on those who are speaking on behalf from Biafrans, most especially those on the genuine side. Listen, the world don't care about how you feel. They don't care about your emotion. What they care about is how determined you are. So please, let's continue to know that we are representing the Biafran people. We are speaking to the public and please, 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 kill all the emotions and continue to remain determined and persistent. And, um, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna reach out to my, um, my rep and I will make my donation through. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. John Luis, John Luis, over to you.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Yeah, this evening, I'm, I want to give APM cola with twenty a gemma. I love, uh, his positivity this evening. Uh, positivity of a leader is contagious. Uh, whenever a leader is positive, those looking up, up to him will be energized. So it is really important what he's did this evening, most especially the dance. I love that. Well done, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
You don't like him, that's again.
We have to send this thing to our enemy. Uh huh, before anything I had a big guy done, hard jam, what?
A topic for the week.
Tomorrow it will be headline now, and then it's time to dance like PM.
A topic for the week. Honorable Nenda, over to you.
Yeah, I don't know, you couldn't ever leave. Uh, I cannot allow you to end this program without recognizing the good work that our APM has done, His Excellency. His Excellency, Honorable Ogenkere. Thank you, sir. And for that reason, I may worry, in the Canada, give worry, two hundred dollar, Jwari God.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
A gemma, okay, two hundred a gemma, sorry. Jwari God.
Thank you.
Honorable Ogenkere, for that dollar, you have to do something, nah? You pay fine.
Yes, that is true.
No, no, APM, APM.
Love is sleeping, this is a perfect time.
Love is living on duty.
Your love is sleeping on duty.
I think that, uh, I, I, we, I, we, I will put extra ten, ten a gemma, can you give us one?
Okay, alright.
Love, love, this one, I should love, I should love you, ah, I need you to say, you for don't
Now we, we now.
So any nigger, uh, two hundred and ten a gemma.
Only ten, ten a gemma, need a him.
Thank you.
Money genie, money genie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, you owe me.
Thank you. We have to.
And you can like a Japocot.
Honorable, over to you, Ifai Emoshi. Ifai Emoshi.
Actually, I have announcement.
Yeah, Honorable Love, wait, after Ifai Emoshi, you can go.
Okay.
Hello, Honorable Sunny, thank you very much. I'm very, very happy. Uh, ununa, ununa, phala, mekala, alola. I want to say to the end. Our A P M, thank you very much, I think you have shown me the new, new direction, all new ways of path. So I can dance in another way now. Very good people. Thank you very much. Uh, we sit on God, the leader, that year now, yeah, I'm sure us were for. Go to Alabese, go out, hop, and stop, can you watch Ambarzonia, that's why you know. For where? I got to Alabese, what I need, I got, I want to go, I'm about to go get that door today. I'm very happy. So, I recorded, I'm gonna see here, when they push you, I'll go, I'll go, I'm the week, so I'm a symbol. I'm a galan, I'm a like that. Probably have a feeling, I'm five, five thousand AJ ma, where I support them, when you want, and I'm not stealing, and he will, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agamak. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we will, yeah, yeah, A P M, thank you.
Imela.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you. Honorable Love, over to you.
Okay, there were no more Biafra. Uh. And we have more update. Hundred AJ ma. From Chukuma, that brings New York to nine hundred. And, um. AJ mo. Eighty AJ ma. Why A P M? Here you stop, what am I position, I'm a Lambo police in the Biafra.
That's why I hate the way you not, you get revenue.
In fact.
Good place.
The kind of joke, the kind of joke, I give producer, I'm not proud.
Chere, 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 chere. Um, honorable love, honorable love, chere, chere. A P M has the right to wake up a sleeping police on duty. A sleeping police on duty. Police was sleeping on duty and then A P M had to use the veto power, veto power to wake up police on duty.
Eh eh, if I was sleeping, yes, but I wasn't sleeping.
If you were sleeping, yes, eh eh, you don't talk.
I wasn't sleeping, that's the problem.
But you answer, yes.
You know I'm gonna get you, you know I'm gonna get you. For resisting arrest. Eh eh. Eh eh, our official police, they lay la nya, you get, again, I'm bad, Jim. Delay is not allowed, in my over and under, fast, fast, you delay. No, I keep saying I'm here, I'm here, nobody was hearing me. That's the problem, in fact. I need your uniform stressing me out.
They suppose they allow that person, you know that person. Most of police, they suppose they allow that person, you know that person.
Okay, now you've given me license to open my big mouth.
Come to my, you, you don't try, don't try.
You guys see that this is the Biafra we are looking for, right? Where everybody can hear his or her opinion, you don't have to take permission from the. From the queen before you can say what's in your mind.
Right.
One of the life-changing experiences I had when we first traveled to New Zealand was. Learning that a police officer. On the road. Stacked. Assistant Inspector, Inspector General of Police. Because he. Found him driving under the influence of alcohol. So a police constable on the road was responsible for. Um, Assistant Inspector General of Police losing his job. I'm like, being new from Nigeria, I was like. How can that happen? If he wa- he was in the zoo, the, the constable would say, oh, correct, sir, oh.
That's true.
Right, so. Uh, no, so this is the Biafra, our Prime Minister promised. Um, Biafras, bringing Finland to. To Biafraland, and when he says bringing Finland, that means bringing. An average first world country to, to Biafraland. And with that.
Yes.
Uh, equity. Justice and equity is the driving force. We are seeking to do the best we can. And in the economy viability thing, we concluded that any country. Or any group of people. That makes. Good effort. To meet the needs of its people. Will be economically viable. So. In Biafra, we are seeking. To solve the problems that face us. And in the process of solving those problems. We will develop and become economically viable, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, that's a great.
Go offline now, Minister Jare, you can go offline.
No, don't, don't go offline, first, let me, uh.
Okay, wait, A P M wanted to say something.
Let me, let me, great Biafras. Thank you, thank you all, thank you, Biafras. It have been a great day. And a lot of poor spirit are awakened by the event. I'm honored to be here, likewise, every fellow Biafras. The reason why is because. It's time to make Biafra free again. And we know, we are here in the United States of America. Whereby the former president and the current president. Emphasize more, talking about. How they will make America great again. It's time. We'll make Biafra great again. It's time, we'll make Biafra worthy again. It's time, we'll make Biafra live again. It's time, we make Biafra smile again. It's time, we make Biafra happy again. It's time. We will make Biafra totally to be liberated. From the zoo country called Nigeria. Fellow Biafras. Be part. In making Biafra free, 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 free again. Thank you all, I hope we get the message. It's time we make Biafra what our creator, Chukwue Okike Abiama. Destiny Biafra to be. He never want us to be in the hand of our terrorist enemy that slaughter us, kill us. He did not create Biafras. To be in the position we are now. So that's why it's time we all fight with his support to be free again, thank you.
Thank you, A P M.
Thank you, A P M. Minister Jare, go offline, go offline, Minister Jare.